Good morning, everyone. And welcome to the very controversial Trade, Commerce and Tourism Committee. It's Thursday, January 27th. I'm Councilwoman Janice Hahn. I chair this committee. And I know many of you were packed in here this morning. And I understand there are some in an overflow room. 1070 is the overflow room. And I appreciate all of you coming down here this morning. I may, I'm not going to be joined by Councilmember Bill Rosendahl this morning. I may be joined later by Councilmember Tom Labonge. We're waiting to see whether or not he's going to come. But we do have all the time in the world. Usually, my, my committee is usually scheduled for 8:45 on a council morning. So we, and we usually have about 10 items on the agenda. And we're usually really pushing up to the 10 a.m. hour when the Sergeant of Arms usually comes and hauls away at least one of us to make quorum for the city council meeting. So we're always pressured for time during this committee. So I scheduled it specifically this morning with no council commitment on my part, any part of the day, so that we do have enough time to listen to everyone's comments, everyone's point of view. And we're here this morning because the City Council of Los Angeles agreed to what we call assert jurisdiction. It's one of our charter, God-given rights to assert jurisdiction over any decision that's made by a commission in the city of Los Angeles. And that allows the city council, even though we don't, we're not a commissioner that oversees one of these departments, it allows us to bring the item or the issue into full city council and just take another look at it. And then we have the option of either sustaining the commission's decision, which means we say, okay, we've listened to all the facts and we're okay with your decision, we would agree with it. Or we have the option to veto a decision by the commission. And what that does is send it back to the commission that made the decision and maybe with a recommendation that they take another look at it or come back maybe with a different decision or recommendation. So that's what we're doing today. The first stop is this committee. And then it goes to the full city council for their opportunity to also weigh in on the item. So we asserted jurisdiction on the Harbor Commission's action that rejected the proposal by Gamble Industries that would bring a Green Union state-of-the-art shipyard to Los Angeles, bringing what many of us believe to be thousands of jobs, different kinds of jobs, to the harbor. And so we're going to hear today from port staff. We have the executive director of our port, Dr. Geraldine Nats, here. We're going to hear from commissioner. We have two commissioners here this morning who made that decision. We have the president of the commission, Cindy Misakowski, and we have Dave Arian as well here. We'll hear from, we're going to definitely hear from the public. In fact, I'm going to start out with public comment. And we're going to hear from everyone who's filled out a card to listen to your point of view before. I thought that would be a good idea so you can all listen to the different comments and maybe respond to some of the comments in your presentations. We're going to hear from the shipyard proponent, Gamble Industries. Ben Resnick's going to represent them and give us their proposal. We're going to hear from Linda Dishman, who is representing the L.A. Conservancy, who is also a part of the MOU. And who else am I hearing from? The Army Corps of Engineers. Yes, we're going to hear from Brian Moore, the Army Corps will also be here to speak. And then I'm going to have an opportunity, and kind of what this does for me and the city council members when we hold a hearing like this. It allows us to really vet the issue, ask our own questions. Sometimes we don't get the opportunity. Many times I will go to the Harbor Commission and they're always very generous with letting me speak, but I don't really get a chance to ask the kind of questions that I would ask to get a better understanding of the issues. So that's kind of what we'll do here this morning. Expect everybody to be respectful. We have a new degree of civility in this country. And let's start right here in the Trade, Commerce and Tourism Committee. Just because someone might not agree with your point of view, we can all agree to disagree on this issue, but we, I expect everybody to be respectful. And by the way, I think this is a tough issue. And I think you'll, you'll see that as we hear this morning from all the different sides who have an interest in this proposal, that there are different angles and different assessments of how the end result could be. And I think this one's hard for me because I have friends on all sides of this. I'll tell you that right off the bat. I have no greater friends in the harbor area than, than the men and women of ILW who work on the docks every single day and who really are the backbone of the entire goods movement industry and not just in the Southern California region, but clearly throughout, throughout the country. And you'll hear them talk this morning about how important the channel deepening project is to the future of the competitiveness of the Port of Los Angeles and positioning our port in a way that can accommodate the next generation of vessels. And you will hear them talk about, you know, this representing 10,000 good jobs at the harbor. And you'll hear them talk about, you know, the Panama Canal coming onboard and the ports in Mexico and Canada and Houston and how we've got to remain competitive if we want to continue to corner the market on the international trade industry. And again, I have no better friends out there than the men and women. I've supported them every single issue they've ever had. And, but you'll hear another group of labor, those who are involved in the building trades, pile drivers, the steel workers, the iron workers, the electricians. I don't know if they're all going to be here today, but you'll hear them talk about those kinds of jobs could be created through a state-of-the-art union shipyard, shipyard repair and building facility, that those are also good jobs. Those are also skilled jobs. And sometimes there is not enough work for those kinds of workers at the Port of Los Angeles. And this would be a great opportunity to build on not just the, the, those men and women that load and unload the cargo, but the men and women who really could begin to build, repair and maintain ships in our harbor. And you're going to hear from the Conservancy who want to preserve the historic nature of this facility. So, and you're going to hear from, I think even business people have taken a different take on this. You know, you've got One Chamber, the L.A. Chamber, who came out very strong saying, again, they, they think the shipyard would interfere with the main channel dredging. And, and they're very insistent that we not do anything to hurt the main channel dredging. But you'll hear, I don't know if they're here, but folks from, from our local Chamber of Commerce, San Pedro Chamber of Commerce, who support building a shipyard at the Port of Los Angeles. So we've really got good people on all sides of this issue. And I'll tell you, from the, from the very first time I've said, every one of my comments, is it just me or is it really hot in here? Yeah, I've already asked one of my staff members to check on the, the temperature because we're not going to make it. And the hot air hasn't even started to flow. But, you know, and everything I, everything I've said has been, and I've supported the main channel deepening project from the very beginning. I've been a huge supporter of that project because I get what that means. I get what that means to our future. But the more I've, I've looked at, I've learned more about shipyards than I've ever known in my whole life. And the concept of bringing a good shipyard really makes sense. When you hear the arguments for the shipyard, they, they are standalone arguments. It makes sense. We're, we're at the top 25 ports. We're the only, Long Beach and L.A. are the only ones that don't have a major shipbuilding and repair facility. So it does make sense as we grow at the port that we have, you know, we can accommodate a shipyard. So said all that to say, it's a very interesting issue. And at the end of the day, I don't really know what I will recommend to the full city council that we do going forward, but I am certainly here to listen and I'm certainly here to see again if there is a way. And I've always wanted a win-win situation, which I think everybody has wanted. I think everybody wanted to figure out, how do we do both? Can we continue to dredge our main channel? Can we continue on the schedule of dredging our main channel? No delay. But can we also build a shipyard at the Port of Los Angeles? And I think everybody wanted us to get to that point. So we'll see at the end of this committee meeting whether we got to that point or not. And I will start with public comment. Let's do that. And let's, there's a lot of public comment. Should we give two, a minute? One minute apiece. How's that? And that doesn't include those that are going to be called up from the port, the Army Corps, Gamble, Linda, everyone who was involved in the MOU. I'm going to give you your own time. But I will limit a minute. And I'm not going to cut anybody, this is obviously, I'm running this committee and there's no one else here. So I'm not going to cut you off in the middle of your sentence, okay? If you've got a thought to finish, finish. But you probably will be able to say what you need to say in a minute or so. Okay. So let me call up, how many, we got three microphones, four microphones up there. Why don't we, I'll call four at a time so you're up and ready and ready to speak. John Schaefer, now John Bridwell, we should, should we want him later? Later. Tom Moxley, Jessica Duboff and Tom Politeo are the first four. I have no order of this. I just picked these cards when they came. It is like really hot. I was able to have a great experience in my life Monday night, Tuesday night. I was the guest of Congresswoman Jane Harmon and was actually able to be there in person when the president gave the State of the Union address. It was very exciting to be there. But the temperature in, in the room where he gives the speech is freezing. In fact, many of the congressmembers bring, you know, they layer their clothes because it's so cold, because every president has insisted that the temperature in there is freezing because they don't, we don't want to see our president sweat when they give the speech. So it was a little bit of history I heard that night. So we would do well, because I feel like I'm already sweating. So we'd be do well to work on the temperature. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Me first?
Yeah. John.
Again, this, my name is John Schaefer, I'm a pile driver's level 20.
Are these microphones on?
Yeah, it's supposed to.
Okay, it didn't sound like it.
I'm from pile drivers level 2375, born and raised in the area. And we would be participating in either one of these storage systems, whether it be dropping the rock or doing the sheet pile, to store that in there. It's a very, very complex idea, you know, and like I said, it's not a matter of building a shipyard, as I've said in writing before. I support the idea of having a shipyard, especially considering the size of the ports and everything else that goes through there. But as someone who's also involved with the dredging and the dock work that would come up from there, what's really difficult for me to accept is the projections of being able to go by those guidelines, timelines of getting permits approved from either Coastal Commission and/or the Army Corps of Engineers. It is very, very important that we build this port as soon as possible, increase our exports through, develop the Alameda Quarter. There's a tremendous potential that's available. I don't think that these timelines that have been set from Gamble are going to be able to be met. There's been too many lawsuits that have held up too many things and that the approval process is just too long.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Hahn. It's good to see you. My name is Tom Moxley and I'm president of the L.A. Orange County Building Trades. And we represent 140,000 men and women in the trades, 60, about 60,000 currently out of work. We are in support of the Gamble project, but we are also in support of not delaying the dredging. We represent the operating engineers and other craft members that do the dredging. We understand the complexity of this and we are in full support of moving many projects forward in the port, which the dredging is key. So we're not in a position, we've never taken a position that we want to see the dredging delayed a minute. But on the other hand, we truly believe that this is a win-win situation and that we can have both projects. The building trades is held and the craft members always say, measure twice, cut once, because once you cut it, it's hard and a lot more expensive or irreparable. And that's what's at the thing, and I thank you and applaud you, Janice, for looking at this and taking a second, third, fourth look and to make sure down the road this isn't. And we're in support of both of those projects. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Which one?
My name is Jessica Duboff. I'm here on behalf of the L.A. Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to read a letter that our CEO, Gary Tobin, submitted to this committee earlier this week. I'm writing this letter in support of the decision by the Port of Los Angeles Harbor Commission to proceed with the main channel deepening project and not run the risk of delaying that project with an amendment to the master plan or an application to modify the existing Corps of Engineers permit for the Gamble Industries' shipyard proposal. We have read the letters from the Department of the Army Corps of Engineers and the California Coastal Commission on this subject, and we're convinced of the high probability that a design modification at this time would necessitate a reopening of the permit process and cause a significant delay in the channel deepening project at the least, and in the worst-case scenario, the denial of the new design amendment. For more than a year and a half now, we've been hopeful that a win-win solution could be developed that would allow for the deepening of the main channel and the location of the new shipbuilding facility being proposed. While we thank Gamble for their dedication to bringing jobs to the harbor, it does not appear to be possible to achieve this win-win scenario and still meet the competitive timeline that the port will face from the widening of the Panama Canal and the modernized East Coast ports. Too many jobs and too much of our economy is at stake to make any other recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Politeo. I am with the Sierra Club. And I think the reasons for being here have been said many times over. But first, I'd like to say that I've got great respect for this port staff and the Harbor Commission. And I've got friends on both sides of this issue. I think the port staff is the best we've ever seen. From what I've seen traveling around the country, they may be the best in the nation. We're very fortunate to have them. Good people, however, don't always, as you can see in this issue, agree. The length of a minute, as I'm fond of telling the port, depends on which side of the bathroom door you're on, and your perspective of how long that minute is depends on which side you're on. and your perspective of how long that minute is depends on which side you're on. I really think that this is a project we should find a way to move forward with. And if indeed we are at such peril at the Port of Los Angeles, that the whole port may fall apart, because we end up inadvertently delaying a project through risks associated with this Gamble Industries' project, doesn't that argue that we need to diversify what we're doing in the port more than it argues that we keep business as usual? But most of all, we really shouldn't be here today. We're in the process of micromanaging the port. And what should have happened, and what we really need to open up the doors, no matter what decision is made here today, is looking at the port master planning process, not just inside the borders of the port, but regionally, how we're going to make this port competitive and functioning well for the future, because that is what's going to make or break this port, not Gamble Industries.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Okay. Mary Jo Walker. Stephanie Martisich. What is it? Rich Steins. I didn't see Rich Steins here this morning. Chidsey. Oh, Darren Chidsey. Oh, from SCAG. Hi, I'm sorry. Hi, Rich. Okay. Mary Jo. Good morning.
My name is Mary Jo Walker and I'm representing the San Pedro Bay Historical Society, plus myself. Of course, being on the Historical Society, we do not want to see the shipyard go away. It was built in 1917. It's the only one that we've got left in the harbor. We are historical harbor, it says. We need to have something down there that represents the history of our community. Also, we need the jobs. We don't want to stop the deepening of the channel, but we do need the jobs. We need to diversify, like Paul said. We need other jobs in the port. I know the port's doing the best they can to try to straighten this out, but I'm sure there's a way we can all compromise and come to a good conclusion that Gamble, a company that wants to come in and put their own money into our community, will give us jobs and help the community grow. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Stephanie Martisich, representing myself and my mother, Lee Sher Martisich. We've gone on record, January 11th, when we couldn't make the meeting, because my mother, who would be here today, but has had some health challenges, has pointed out and been published in the paper supporting the effort of Gamble reopening Southwest Marine, much because of the history that's, we can, everybody's saying it before me or after me. We support it historically. We support it for commerce in the area. People are going to buy things, need places to live, buy property. That's all the benefits that we know. Yesterday, our carpet cleaner was at my mother's. He used to be a fisherman. And I was telling him about this story. He wasn't aware of it. And he said, "We used to pull the boats in there." And he remembered it fondly and how important it was. Now, there's a fisherman who had to find another kind of work, because there is no fishing industry. Let's not do what has happened previously. Get rid of something that's so vital. You can't take out the cement if they fill it. So, think about that. Remember Beacon Street, as we pointed out. We cannot ever get it back. We can't be short-sighted. We need to take more time. And both things can happen, we believe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairwoman Hahn. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Darren Chidsey and I'm representing the Southern California Association of Governments. Unfortunately, our Executive Director, Asana Karata, couldn't be here today, so we ask that I come and offer some thoughts. You know, we certainly understand this is a local issue and we don't want to be appearing advocating for any particular--
Okay, fine. Thank you. Next.
However, as a long-range planning agency and clearinghouse for environmental documents, we did think it was important to provide some particular information that you might find useful in your deliberations. You know, one of the responsibilities we serve as the environmental clearinghouse is to take environmental documentation for projects that are deemed regionally significant. And certainly, throughout the planning of the port's main channel deepening project, SCAG received a copy of the Environmental Impact Report on multiple occasions and indicated in our intergovernmental review clearinghouse report that the project is significantly important to the region. As you know, the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles are important in maintaining the global competitiveness of the region. And we certainly support the accelerating of all-goods movement infrastructure implementation in Southern California to ensure the economic competitiveness in the region. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, in reality, it isn't a local issue, as you pointed out. It's really a regional issue. But thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hahn. My name is Rich Steins. I'm the President of the Southern California District Council of the International Longshore and Warehouse Union. The ILWU represents nearly 20,000 full and part-time workers in and around the Port of Los Angeles. As previously stated, the ILWU strongly supports the main channel deepening project. And we recognize how critical it is the project proceeds on schedule and on budget. Any delay in dredging or added costs due to an unplanned relocation of contaminated soil will have a negative impact on the port's function as an economic engine to the city, the region, and the entire country. In these uncertain economic times, we cannot afford to put any job at risk. But if we do not move forward on the dredging project today, we will just, we will do just that. In my hand is a list of $5 billion of infrastructure projects in California that are funded and ready to go, starting with the dredging of the main channel. The dredging project was stopped in 2005 and that delayed other port-related projects from moving forward. The transportation infrastructure EIR process has stalled here. It is time to get it back on track. All along the Eastern Gulf Coast, ports are dredging in preparation for a deeper, wider Panama Canal. It is absolutely critical that we continue to dredge our harbor without any further delay. Any delay would not only put at risk thousands of port-related jobs, but it will send the wrong message to shippers that want to bring their cargo through our port. More cargo equals more jobs. There are hundreds of thousands of jobs in Southern California related to the port complex, not just longshore jobs. The high rate of unemployment within the ranks of the billing trades is unacceptable. $5 billion in projects. Let's put this state back to work. While everyone has said they don't want to see the dredging delayed, no one has acted. This is the time to take action. In conclusion, we ask you to move forward on the dredging of our harbor. This project cannot be delayed for one minute, let alone one day or one month. If a shipyard can be built without a delay, build it. If it will cause a delay, then it's time to fill the slips and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, let me just ask you this, Rich. As you said, do you feel like, and again, if it did not delay the main channel deepening, do you think there's an opportunity and a need for a bigger shipyard repair and building facility at our port?
Chairwoman Hahn, the ILWU has repeatedly stated we're not against bringing a shipyard in here. And this issue really has only been about dredging for us. If you can bring a shipyard in and not delay this, then do it. But the fact is, any delay in Panama Canal will be open before. Our port pilots are complaining about the ships coming in now without having the dredging. So, it's a problem today.
Right. By the way, just to let everybody know, the dredging, and I'll ask the staff to reconfirm that, the dredging is happening now. It is moving forward. It is moving forward as we speak today. So, the only delay was that five years when there was an attempt to try to relocate, to find a place for this dirt. But the dredging resumed last July. So, it's happening. So, and by the way, this committee meeting is not slowing it down. All of our questions that we're asking is not slowing it down. Even if, you know, we send it back to the Harbor Commission for maybe a different outcome, it is not slowing it down. So, it is happening right now as we speak.
Thank you.
Yes. Just to let everybody know. Okay. Michelle Grubbs. JoJo Cortez. Joe Radisich. Really?
Good morning.
Good morning, Michelle.
My name's Michelle Grubbs. I represent the Pacific Merchant Shipping Association, PMSA and its members. PMSA represents terminal operators, ocean carriers. PMSA and its members account for about 80, 85% of all the containerized cargo moving in and out of the West Coast ports. With me today, I know we only have 46 seconds left. With me today, I brought a letter, for the record, from PMSA talking about our need to move forward with the channel deepening, the issues with the competitiveness. But I also brought specific letters from each container terminal that would be impacted by any delay to this, to the dredging project. So, those are: West Basin Container Terminal says it would be disastrous to our business. Houston Container Terminal says this is a significant issue to us. It would put us at a competitive disadvantage. TreyPEC says we are spending over $300 million upgrading our facility to be able to compete in the future. Any delay would put our ability to compete at risk, risking thousands of good-paying jobs. Evergreen, Evergreen also sent a letter. And they are talking about the death at their terminal now, limiting the ability to have containers today. It cannot be delayed. It is very critical. Thank you.
Thank you. JoJo.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the International Longshore and Warehouse Union Local 13 to express the significance of the critical issue we're addressing today. I want to stress that the union is not against Gamble Industry or any other organization to build on the proposed site. However, again, I want to reiterate, the number of jobs that might be created by this proposed proposal will be overshadowed by the jobs lost. Any delay of the main deepening channel project will greatly affect the economy of the city of Los Angeles and impact thousands of jobs in the port and the surrounding communities. Mega container ships are being built at an increasing rate. For those of you, for you that, people that aren't familiar, these jumbo vessels can be as big as 300, as big as three football fields and are expected to have a 25 cent net increase in container capacity. The only way to get these ships here is to dredge. The shippers and suppliers are observing. Any delays would result in going to other ports. At the present time, the Port of Los Angeles is the number-one port in North America, moving millions of containers, which creates jobs for the city of Los Angeles and the state of California. We do not want to lose our ranking. Tuesday evening, President of the United States said that we, as a nation, in order to recover from this failed economy, need to focus on education, innovation, and infrastructure. While my education has been earned in working in the port for over 40 years, I have witnessed changes in technology and advancements. And our members have continuously trained on new equipment to promote efficiency. We are constantly educating our members in our history, safety, and technology. We will continue to educate ourselves--
Thank you.
--in order to sustain the port. However--
I'm trying to be fair with everybody.
Okay, let me finish it up. Let me just say, you know, and like you said, you were there. You were at the State of the Address.
Right.
And the President said, "We've got to get bigger."
Absolutely.
"We've got to get bigger." So, let us get bigger.
Good. Thank you.
Please, don't halt the dredging.
Thank you. Danny.
Hi, Councilwoman Hahn. Thank you for the opportunity. One of the things you did point out here, I'd like all my brothers and sisters of the ILWU to stand up today that are in this room, please. So, we want you to make sure you show the support of the workers, as you stated earlier. These are all my brothers and sisters. The ILWU has stood by very patiently over the last month and year watching this discussion regarding Gamble Industries' shipyard. We have said repeatedly that our concerns are only where there is a potential of any setback of the approved dredging project, which is underway. Unfortunately, we are seeing that many people have been less than honest when it comes to their statements, that they will in no way interfere with the dredging project. To put the dredging and the importance of dredging into perspective of what it represents to the goods movement, supply chain, the local communities, the city, and the state, dredging is the first step that we must take in order to capitalize on the $5 billion worth of infrastructure projects which are currently on the books and 95% funded. President Obama, in his recent State of the Union address, referred to infrastructure projects and the value in reinvesting in America so that we can compete successfully in the global economy. Not capitalizing on projects which are funded in these economic times will prove disastrous. The Port of Los Angeles serves--
Thanks for asking to wrap it up.
--an economic union. And I will tell you, it's very important that we move forward and go with the recommendations of the Harbor Commission, who approved this project. It's very crucial to our industry and our livelihood.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Former Commissioner, former Harbor Commissioner--
I hold--
Joe Radisich.
I hold no positions right now. I'm nothing but a working longshoreman. So, I'm here on my own time. I took a day off work to be here.
Maybe a casual guide at some work.
A year and a half ago, I made the statement here, I made the statement here a year and a half ago that I believe that this project was jeopardizing the future of the port. And I don't think you like that. But today, I believe the same thing. This thing has run its course and I believe that the decisions need to be made to move forward. The ILWU, and I'm not speaking for the ILWU, but I've been a past officer, has made the statement, "We're not against Gamble." That's true. But we are against Gamble on that site. If Gamble wants to do a shipyard in another part of the port, you know, it may be doable. But it's time to move on. And, you know, all the things about the Panama Canal and all those other things, I mean, I could spend 20 minutes up here talking. But once again, I believe if this thing goes past today, you're jeopardizing the future of the port.
Thank you very much. But again, I'm going to have to correct you on that, because nothing is, at this point, delaying the channel deepening project. It is moving forward. Even if we discuss this another week, it will not jeopardize the channel deepening project. I'm just going to say that again. And I can have the Army Corps reaffirm that. It's not stopped. It's not delayed. And even talking about it another week is not going to delay it. So, I just want to make that clear to everybody.
Many people have, you know, when the economy was real down, they put a nail in the coffin of the international trade business. But, you know, it's come roaring back.
Right.
I mean, the numbers are 1,000 Gamble jobs, but you're talking about tens of thousands--
No, we get it. But I'm just saying, discussing it won't delay it.
Thank you.
Okay. Jaime Hernandez. Scott Gray. Deborah Baker. And David Frelo. Just want to remind everybody, Just want to remind everybody, even if we stayed here all day discussing it, it would not delay the project, the channel deepening project. What's going on right now, as we speak, full speed ahead.
Okay. Ma'am Chairman, my name is Scott Gray. I'm President of the Maritime Research Center in San Pedro and a member of the Governing Board and Secretary of the Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council. My professional view of this issue echoes that of our Neighborhood Council, which is to condemn in the strongest possible terms the recent action by the Board of Harbor Commissioners. The Gamble proposal has wide support among the community. San Pedro is not, despite perceptions, a feudal fiefdom governed by five dukes forming a harbor commission. It is a community that is and feels unfortunately far removed from this center of government, and its residents too frequently suffer that distance and the resulting disconnection from decisions that exert their effect for decades. This is an issue of local importance. It is an issue that will indeed affect the San Pedro community for decades. I'm confident this committee will find the means to ensure that fairness finally will prevail here and that oversight in this important matter will prevail.
Thank you.
Good morning, Councilmember Janice Hahn and members of the committee. My name is Jaime Hernandez. I'm a member of Local 802. Been at the Labor's for about 29 years now. And, right now, I'm currently an organizer. And it's disheartening to, to talk to hundreds and hundreds of Labor's out there of their financial difficulty right now. They're on general relief. People are on welfare. We need, we need these jobs. We need them now. And my second point is, there's a concept called design-build in construction. If this was a design-build project and you ran into a problem with contaminated dirt, the problem would have been resolved. You can't delay a project on a simple matter of construction. It's a simple thing. Just get it done. We need the jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Deborah Baker, and I'm the Business Manager of Labor's Local 802. I represent construction workers that are currently dredging in the port, and I represent workers who want to work in the shipyards. Our local was originally chartered in 1937 as a shipyard worker union. I'm a San Pedro native, born and raised, and I've seen a lot of changes in San Pedro. And I have to, we're all up here saying the same thing, basically. We want to continue, we have to continue dredging. That's not an option. That has to continue. And we need other jobs. We need economic diversity back in our ports. I was having this conversation last night with somebody saying, "Remember when you can go to the Port of Los Angeles and find a job?" It wasn't, "Can I find a job?" It's, "What do I want to do in the Port of LA? Do I want to be a fisherman? Do I want to work in the canneries? Do I want to work in the shipyards? Do I want to work construction or longshoring?" It's about bringing back economic diversity, and I think we need to move forward. Both projects have to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Good morning. My name is David Freelo. I represent the Labor's International Union, North America, Local 802 Wilmington, California. I'm here today in full support of moving forward on the Gamble Industries' shipyard I'd like to request that we not stop the dredging. It's really great that we haven't, and it's not going to stop. We have many, many great building trades members out here who are skilled, safe, ready, willing, and more importantly, able to, to make sure that this project is successful. We also like to, you know, bring to the table the unforeseen revenue that's going to be generated by tourism and the many, many different jobs and the diversity that will be created by this. And, of course, I'd like to state that, or request that we move forward and make it successful, and whatever we can do to help you be successful, please do not hesitate to reach out and, and let's just have this as a model for the nation to look at.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll hear from Joaquin Santos, Julian Jimenez, Frank Anderson, and former Councilmember Rudy Savornich. And then Elizabeth Warren. So, that's the last four I have. There's, are there any more cards? Okay.
Good morning, Janice, or Councilmember Hahn. My name is Joaquin Santos. I'm with Labor's Union Local 802. And once again, we are here in support of Gamble Industries. It seems to me that everybody is, we're all repeating the same thing. We're all in favor of shipyard, it seems, if it doesn't impact the dredging. And we all agree on that. I think, out of this meeting, we truly hope that the Port of Engineers with the directive from the, the Corps of Engineers, from the directive from the port staff, knowing that the community needs to be involved somehow, is able to come up with a workable plan to move forward without impacting one or the other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julian Jimenez, Labor's Local 802. You got me here up against a hard spot. My family's ILW, my other family's building trades. We build the ports that that engine runs on. There's no way that I would want to delay anything that would hurt that engine. We built, or we process a tunnel underneath the Vincent Thomas Bridge, microtunneling. Many of you don't know that. Many of you do. If there was a doubt in my mind that we couldn't make this project successful, I wouldn't be here. You heard all the facts coming from my brothers and sisters from both sides. Really, this one, this town here is one union, and it's a union town. So, you're going to be hearing all these facts over and over. Show us something on that board that it's going to be possible for us to build this. Stop all this BS. Show us some facts. Gentlemen, take your suits off, roll your sleeves up. Show us some facts that it's not going to delay this widening of the channel, and we can build this port, this shipyard that we want built.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Rudy Savornich, former councilman of the 15th District, representing Al Larson Boat Shop. And first, I want to commend you on fighting to bring jobs to the harbor area. Of those in the room, you and I both know probably than anyone else in the room, it's really tough to bring jobs in a bad economy. I had shipyards closed when I was in office. You're trying to get one open, and you're to be commended for that. What I'm here to talk about this morning is not about channel deepening or any of that. We all know that's important, but I can't speak to that. What I want to talk about is process. Just last weekend, we watched some exciting football games. And in another couple of weeks, we're going to watch another big, exciting game. And what we learn when we watch football is when the whistle blows, the play is over. One of the things that we have to understand is that the play for the exclusivity for Gamble to build a shipyard here was over on September 30th. That's according to the MOU that was signed between the port and Gamble. Our concern is, is that we may want to play too. And there's others that may want to play out there as well. And if we go forward with this process, we want to be able to make sure that we possibly can play. It is also, the exclusivity is against the Harbor Department's master leasing plan, which I also have as well. Madam Chair, what we would like to ask is, that since the whistle was blown, since September 30th, we've been playing on the sidelines. And there's a reason you can't play on the sidelines. First of all, there's no room, and it's against the rulebook. And what we would like to do is get the game back on the field. And so, we would hope that the council action that is going to be before the council on Tuesday puts the game back on the field. Because we're not against a shipyard. For 107 years, Al Larson has been there, 95 of which, there's been a competitor next door. We and maybe others want to play too, and that's all we're asking. In summary, I heard a great thing from a council president that you'll appreciate and everyone will appreciate many years ago. He once said, "Son, if you're looking for salvation, you're in the wrong building. You go to a church. If you're looking for justice, you're in the wrong building. You go to a court of law. You're in City Hall. What we give out here is fairness." And that's all we're asking for today, Madam Chair. We're asking for fairness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Also, in football, you can throw a red flag and ask to review the play. But, I think you also will appreciate, appreciate a better phrase that came from former Councilmember Gil Lindsay, who got up one time in a, in a very controversial issue, and the council chambers were packed, and he said, "I have friends on this side, and I have friends on this side. I'm going to vote with my friends."
Okay, good morning. My name is Frank B. Anderson. I'm the Vice President of the San Pedro, Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council. And I'd like to read this into the record. And also a former shipyard worker, too. One of the few in the room that actually has dressed appropriately for the heat.
I know.
The Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council condemns in the strongest possible terms the recent action by the Los Angeles Board of Harbor Commissioners to terminate negotiations with Gamble Industries regarding the potential reopening of the former Southwest Marine Site as an operating shipyard. The arguments in favor of continuing negotiations and of supporting Gamble's intentions for the site are numerous and well-known to the Harbor Commissioners. Support for the project from the San Pedro community is well-documented and unified. Yet, the Harbor Commissioners have chosen to ignore the potential for direct long-term economic benefits to San Pedro and its residents, and ultimately to the greater city of Los Angeles by following Port Staff's recommendation. The recommendation now adopted is severely compromised by the evidence so to be disclosed that Port Staff did not negotiate in good faith with Gamble Industries. We're encouraged that the city council has agreed to take over this issue. Negotiations should be reopened with Gamble. Port Staff should be removed from the process and instead an independent consultant engaged to ensure that the best interests of the community and the port are represented in a final, accurate, and unbiased determination as to the viability of the Gamble project. Time is of the essence in multiple elements of this matter. The need to find a proper disposal site for sediment dredge for the main channel, the need for Gamble Industries to move ahead with site planning, and most importantly, the need to create new jobs in San Pedro as quickly as possible. Therefore, this matter should be reopened by the Harbor Commission as soon as possible opportunity, with direction that be handled fairly and with oversight to ensure that it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Warren.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Elizabeth Warren. I'm the Executive Director of Future Ports. Future Ports members include businesses and stakeholders from all over California and Los Angeles County and Los Angeles City who have an interest in a robust goods movement supply chain, from engineering and construction companies and transportation providers and labor, with several who have spoke today. Our members have a vested interest in the ports, as our livelihood depends on the ports, and we are neighbors with the ports, San Pedro resident myself. But, not everything's been said until everybody's had a chance to say it.
That's right.
So, everyone has spoke very eloquently today, so I'm just going to give the one comment from our Board of Directors, and that is like, that we'd like to respectfully request that the committee and the council take no action that will further delay or cause any delay to the channel deepening project. So, Councilwoman, as you said, I have friends on this side and friends on that side and members on both sides, so we're voting with our friends, too. No delay.
Thank you. And one more card came in. Richard Slosson, we'll have you come and be the last word. Well, not really. Not on this issue, but...
It seems as though there will be still many words on this issue.
Yes, there will be.
I'm Richard Slosson, the Executive Secretary of the Los Angeles and Orange Counties Building and Construction Trades Council, representing 140,000 craft workers throughout Los Angeles and Orange County. I'm here today to restate our view of the possibility of putting a shipyard at the Southwest Marine Yard. We think it is a feasible idea. However, at the same time, we want everyone to know, we represent those who are involved in the dredging of the port, the building of new facilities, and in no way would we ever want to have a project slow all other projects or delay them in any way. That has been our position from the start. But, I should add that we have local unions in our council that represent shipyard workers, have for decades in the harbor. I myself worked in some of the smaller yards when I first started out in the trades, and see this as a very viable and important part of any harbor. Those jobs are good jobs. Those jobs provide family wages, benefits, and good conditions. And if there is a possibility that this can be worked out between the harbor, Gamble Shipyards, and now the Corps of Engineers to find a solution and a way to move forward without delay, we are fully in favor of that and want to thank the Councilwoman for looking into this and making sure that everyone has had a voice in this process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well said. Now, let's go on, as I sort of laid out in the beginning. And, by the way, I really do appreciate everybody coming downtown for this meeting. We were thinking about having this meeting in the harbor area, and then logistically, it did not work out. So, I know it is a trek for people to come downtown Los Angeles, find parking, and come here, take days off. So, I really appreciate everyone coming down. I think everyone had something very important to say this morning, but I think we heard, I mean, the one message that everyone shares is that no one is in favor of delaying the channel deepening project, but everyone was speaking on the possibility, again, of still finding sort of a win-win where we could do both. And we've got the best and brightest minds at the port. We certainly have the smartest engineers. And we were all really wondering, could this work? And so, let's hear now from Gamble. And I was going to try to give, you know, at least 15 minutes for all of the participants in the MOU. If you can do it shorter, we'd appreciate that.
While they're getting ready, does the Chair have a hard copy of the PowerPoint? It might be, in case you can't see it, up on the board.
Oh, here we go.
So, you're able to move it? Okay. You think you want me to do it? You can bring it.
What is that?
Ethy, press the stuff in traffic. Forward it to your office.
Okay.
Do you want it? You agree with it directly, or do you want to go?
We'll take it. Okay. Okay.
My name is Ben Resnick with the law firm of Jeffrey Mangles-Butler &amp; Mitchell. I'm here with my law partner, Ken Ehrlich, and our land use associate, Premier Associate, Elizabeth Smigala. We have been privileged to work on this project because, privileged because it is such a wonderful project, such a, an economic boon to the city. And my comments and what I'd like to focus on is what I believe are the core issues facing you today in the council. We've heard lots of testimony today, and there's a theme. The theme is, "Do not delay channel deepening."
Right.
I have not heard anyone say they're opposed to the shipyard, other than one party, who wants a chance to build it themselves. Other than that, at every hearing, at every hearing we've had, at the commission, everywhere else, no one's opposed to the shipyard. What they are concerned about is channel dredging. So, let me make it clear. Gamble Industries, from the get-go, has always taken the position that we do not want to delay channel deepening. We want this to work. We have proposed solutions that would show that channel deepening can proceed while we proceed with an analysis of the shipyard. So, if you bring it all down to the basic issues today, channel deepening, as you pointed out, is already underway.
Right.
We looked at the schedule of channel deepening very carefully. They're supposed to build a certain rock dike wall. They're supposed to start putting contaminant materials inside the water slips. But, if you look at the timing and you look at when they do that, there is absolutely no reason for building that permanent wall in 2011, because this project as a whole doesn't complete itself till 2013. And what we're asking the port and the Army Corps to do simply is take that part of the project where they're building the wall, the permanent wall, and defer it into 2012. Not delay channel dredging. The dredging will go on. So, the question is, well, how are you going to contain the contaminant sediments from the dredge? So, I'm going to walk over here. And use, actually, I assume this was put up by the port or Army Corps, and what they're showing you is the rock dike wall and its stages as to why they need to build it. But, what it doesn't...
Can I just say, you should put up, you should put up this slide so people can understand...
Oh, good. Okay, there you go.
People need to understand what those two deepwater slips, that's what we're talking about.
Right.
Those two deepwater slips.
So, those two deepwater slips would be ultimately dammed by a large rock dike and all of the contaminants put behind it, and it'll be a permanent landfill, if you will. But, the first stage of what the proposal is, is they're going to build a small toe berm, which is here in number three. I guess they've numbered these. Little number three, and you can see there's a little toe berm here. And then, they're going to put the dredge material for the key for the big wall behind there. The next critical part, if you go to, is number five, when they're going to start actually bringing more material. So, here's our solution.
Okay.
It's a very simple solution. This toe berm can be replaced or used with a simple sheet pile wall that's slightly higher than this toe berm. That will allow the Army Corps to stay on schedule, dump all of the unsuitable or contaminant dredge material into the water slip, leave it there, don't build the big wall, don't bring in the surcharge, don't cap it all till the end of the project. If you look at the Army Corps' schedule, it takes 105 days to build the entire wall. The dredging is spanned out over a course of over a year. And so, it doesn't all happen at once. They can do that part of the project at the end. What that would do is it would give Gamble a window of opportunity, right now, to commence an EIR/ES for the shipyard. So, Army Corps can stay on schedule. We propose the sheet pile wall as a temporary measure to be placed there, dump the contaminants behind it, and Army Corps stays on schedule. So, so here's what I'm curious about, if I may, with the permission of the Chair. You know, a lot of people here, we all care about the jobs. We all don't want to risk jobs. Gamble and its team does not want to delay channel deepening. And I'm just curious, that if the Army Corps of Engineers were to stand up here today and tell the Chair and this group that the solution Gamble has, the temporary solution, would not cause any delay in the channel dredging project, and it would finish on time, how many here in this room would then... America. And here are locations when they've used this open cell, many in Alaska, many throughout the United States. And maybe a little hard at this distance to see the photos, so let me find one. Here's a good example of what it looks like when it's done.
Okay, not everyone in the room is an engineer, so what is, explain that to us.
So what this is, is when you're building a vertical wall along the face of the pier, and then behind that wall, you fill it up with all of the sediments. So instead of the sediment sitting at the bottom of the entire water slip, they're in these contained walls. And we have designed it to accommodate the exact number of cubic yards that the port needs. They say now they need up to 160,000 cubic yards. We've designed it. As you can see, these are used all over the country. These are pictures while they're under construction. This is an LNG terminal in Louisiana that uses it. There's a huge ship there. But I will show you, here's a good example of inside a water slip, what it would look like. There's a ship, there's the face of the wall, and so-
So what you're saying is they could still dump the dirt there, but you would just be configured differently so that the slips could still be used?
That's exactly our proposal, is that the reason we say there's no delaying channel deepening is that the Army Corps can proceed, dump it in there behind a sheet pile wall. We will incorporate that into the shipyard project by putting it into these vertical containment walls, which we've already designed, we submitted to the port, the port acknowledged last spring that, from an engineering perspective, these work. We've accommodated their number, and so at this point-
We hear a lot about any changes into anything would cause permitting approvals, environmental reviews. What would it take to allow that kind of vertical containment? With your understanding-
What it would take is, we would do a separate EIR/ EIS for the shipyard. As part of that EIR/ EIS, we would analyze all of the dirt dumping in those vertical containments, including the dirt that is scheduled to go on top of all of this dirt, that's the China shipping surcharge. All of that would be studied. The only hiccup here, where people are concerned about a delay in channel dredging, is because we have been told by the port, and I assume through Army Corps, that by just simply putting in this wall to temporarily store this material, they need to stop channel dredging, and we don't understand why.
Well, we'll ask them that.
And secondly, they say because they need to do more environmental analysis. Well, what we're saying is, the dredging is exactly from where you have studied it in your EIR, exactly from where your permits are. You're putting it in the exact same location your EIR and your permits require it, same quantities, we didn't reduce you. We're just suggesting a more creative way of storing it so we can save most of the water slips.
And we're going to, and I'll ask them what they think about that.
Okay. So the only rationale given us to date for delay is the fact that we may need to do some studies. Now, let me point out why we don't think they do. The Army Corps initially, in their EIS, said you only need 80,000 cubic yards of contaminant space in there. The 80,000 cubic yards is the volume that was approved by the port when they certified the EIR/ EIS. When they filed the Port Master Plan Agreement Amendment with the Coastal Commission, it was for 80,000 cubic yards. When they got their approval from the Water Quality Control Board, 80,000 cubic yards. When the Army Corps issued what's known as the Record of Decision, that's their official decision, it said 80,000 cubic yards of contaminants. All of a sudden, we fast forward, and we are told, and we designed 80,000 initially, then we were told, no, you've got to double it. When I went back to look and ask Army Corps, how did you double it? They said, well, the Coastal Commission wanted a bigger number, and so we agreed, and we, and since we can accommodate it, we did it. So I said, so let me get this straight. You can double the amount of contaminant material that goes somewhere, and you didn't even need to pause for one day? You didn't do any analysis? You didn't amend your plan? You didn't amend your permit? Your Record of Decision didn't get amended? They said, yeah, it was, you know, it's within their discretion, within their, and you know what? They're absolutely right. It is, because we sent a letter to them last summer pointing out numerous cases, including a U.S. Supreme Court case, where there were challenges to Army Corps projects around the country based on the Army Corps' failure to do adequate environmental work after a project's already been approved, while it was going. And in all of those cases, the court said, the Army Corps does not have to stop and do further analysis, as long as they internally look at what's being done, it's called a minor modification to a permit, and administratively, if they decide, this is safe, this works, they're done. There's no need to do further analysis, further EIRs. And if, I would submit, that if the city of LA and the port of LA were to tell its contractor, who's the Army Corps, we want you to get to that. We're the client, we want you to do that, maybe we'd have a different discussion. You had the Sierra Club say, the Army Corps does not need to do further analysis to do what Gamble wants to do. Who would be challenging it? The reality is, this is done all the time, and so it's a rational solution, a reasonable solution, and one that Gamble is proposing. Again, that's why we maintain there will be no need to delay channel deepening, not one day. So we cited in our PowerPoint exactly from the various documents where it said 80,000 cubic yards. Surprise, now it's 160. Let's talk about that a minute. No one really knows the amount. This is an assessment and an estimate based on an EIR/ EIS analysis. No one actually yet measured it. So they will only know as they dredge, and so this is an estimate. The actual cubic yards of contaminants may end up being 80, maybe less, maybe more, but, you know, this is an estimate range. Our point is, should the city of LA let slip through its fingers and through the cracks an opportunity for a major shipyard, because we're just are going to submit to an agency telling us, I've got to stop everything so I can analyze more data, more documents, et cetera? The only reason for delay is not logistics, it's not that they physically can't do what we say, it's simply, we want to study more. I submit that the city of LA, as the client, as the entity, as the applicant, needs to say, you know, no, we want this done, and yes, the Army Corps is a regulatory body, and they issue a permit to the city, it's called a 404 permit, but they doubled the quantities from 80,000 to 160,000 without changing the 404 permit. They've modified the schedule of the construction without changing the permit. And they tell us, by the way, they do admit, that construction schedule is not subject to EIR/ EIS issues. So all we're saying is, on your construction schedule, change it. Defer the big wall to the end, allow us a chance to put up the sheet pile, put up the sheet pile, let's stay on schedule. You know, most of the dumping is not at these, here. Most of the dumping that they're doing is out in the ocean, at the shallow water habitat, and other places. They will finish on time, and Gamble wants them to finish on time. So that is our proposal, and I think, I thank you for bringing it up for review, because I think we're getting a chance to have a better understanding of what we're saying and why we don't believe there needs to be a delay in channel deepening.
Yeah, let me just ask you, just, and former councilman Rudy Suborn has talked about the process, and I want to talk, ask you a little bit about the process. When we, you entered, when Gamble entered into an MOU with the port of Los Angeles, what was, you think, everybody's expectations? I mean, I know what mine was, and I remember sitting at this committee with Tom Labonge and Bill Rosendahl when that was happening, and a real direct request of the port, to figure this out, to really work together and figure it out, and maybe even talk a little bit about, every time things change, how did Gamble react? I mean, what was the process like? I don't, I don't want to disparage anybody, and I don't think this is a time that I want to disparage anybody. Well, what was the expectation of this MOU? And what do you think both sides wanted to get out of this?
Well, first, let me state that we disagree with legal conclusions presented to you today by other people on the effectiveness in term of the MOU. Gamble raised the idea of rehabilitating the shipyard and bringing it back, back, even before this MOU was entered into in June of 2009, as a result of discussions, and the idea that, gee, we should save a historic shipyard, bring it back to life. Your committee held hearings, and the entire city council, I remember, voted to move forward with an MOU, and then the, and the port was instructed to do that. The Board of Harbor Commissioners then entered into this memorandum of understanding between Gamble and the port of LA. The idea there was that Gamble would bring the solution for storing all this sediments that we've shown you, sort of a vertical wall containment, so that we can demonstrate to the port that you don't need to lose the entire water slips, and we can have a shipyard.
Because why is that important? Why is it important to keep those water slips? I mean, I've heard them say, you could still build a shipyard without those deepwater slips.
There is nowhere in the port of LA or Long Beach you can build a shipyard without those water slips. Those water slips will hold a dry dock system that will be there, that a ship can come onto, a 700-foot ship, and then you can lift it out of the water. You cannot, if you're going to try to dry dock a ship that big in the main channel, you'll be stopping traffic for hours, every time you're going in and out. It's just not feasible, and so, remember, the entrance to this shipyard is right at the main channel, at the entrance to the main channel, effectively. There's nowhere else in the port where you have deepwater slips that you could do that with. And so, anyone who says you can build a shipyard somewhere else, I would challenge them to say, where's a site that you can do that at? But the good question was, so what is the expectation? And our expectation was, that in good faith, the port would work with the Army Corps, and Gamble would provide all the studies under this MOU, and that we would figure out a solution, and that we'd be able to integrate that into the schedule of the Army Corps. Back in 2009, when the city council asked that this MOU be entered into, the Army Corps was not yet under contract with the port. The Army Corps didn't even have a contractor yet. There was no schedule yet for the dredging. That was developed after the MOU was entered into. Our frustration is, and I'd like to know at this hearing, is, over the last two years now, almost, and a year and a half for sure under the MOU, what has the port of LA done to ask its contractor, the Army Corps, to work into the schedule, what the city council clearly said was a shipyard that is desired and wanted? What has the port done in the last year and a half to tell the Army Corps, when we're doing this schedule, let's preserve the opportunity for saving the water slips?
And we'll ask them that.
Okay. So what we see is, we had limited ability. All the MOU required us to do is provide a business plan and a marketing plan and some engineering drawings. That's it. The MOU didn't ask us to get permits. We can't, because the port owns it. The only way we could become an applicant for any permit is if we have a lease, or we have a right to it. And so, the only requirement was to demonstrate to the port, i.e. and the city, that we believe this is a viable shipyard, which we did.
And did most of the discussions and meetings center around this idea of the dirt?
Yes.
Where to dump the dirt, how to configure the dirt, is there a way to put the dirt somewhere else while you study the idea of a ship? I mean, what-
We didn't even go there. We didn't even, because what we wanted to do is stay within the four corners of the EIR/ EIS and the Army Corps permits. We didn't even want to suggest go elsewhere, except for the Long Beach option, which I can cover briefly, but our thought was, this solves your problem. This is within the containment area that you were going to put it in anyways. This past June, when Long Beach announced that it needed almost 3 million cubic yards of dredge and dirt, obviously, we went to the port and we said, you should file an application, because they can take your stuff, and they're next door.
Right, and I'm going to ask them a little bit about that idea.
So that came up, and honestly, the port of Long Beach was interested in this LA dirt, except that, do we have that?
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask them about the Long Beach solution.
When LA submitted an application that included some contaminants and non-contaminants, the port of Long Beach sent a letter saying, we need further clarification of the amount of contaminants, we need a dredge plan. That was in September of 2009, and the answer from the port of LA to Long Beach was, in a letter they sent to them, you know what, we'll get around to that by the year end, is what it said. So Long Beach said, no, thank you, we reject your application on that. However, at the same time, Long Beach said, we will accept all of that clean dirt that's sitting at China Shipping, over 300,000 cubic yards. They accepted that. So you do have a solution there for that.
So in your mind, you, Gamble, felt like they offered up enough solutions, you know, that could make this work without delaying the channel deepening?
You've had now a year and a half to work it into the schedule and create the solutions. I think we're very upset as a group and a company, that here we are, you know, five minutes to midnight, and we're still fighting for a solution that's rational, that will not delay channel deepening one day.
Because you, and I will tell everybody that, that has been clear from Gamble, by the way, every, all along the way, they always respected our insistence that nothing delayed the channel deepening project. So I really want to make that clear, and I heard that over and over again.
So in conclusion, for my part, the only reason there's a delay being talked about, let's be clear.
Yeah.
The only reason is not because our solution cannot be logistically done, or physically done, or doesn't work. It's because the Army Corps appears to say, and they may, when they look at it more closely, they may change their mind on that, appear to say, that wall you want to build, the 30-something-foot-tall wall that's going to be below the water level, we need to do a whole study on that that's going to delay everything? We don't think that's necessary, and that's the hiccup right there. If they're willing to get past that, as everyone seems to want them to, because no one in here is against the shipyard, they're against delay in channel dredging.
Right, right.
If they can get past that, everyone is a winner.
Right.
Everyone is a winner.
You take the dirt, you build a different kind of containment, and you move on. And then, you study this idea of the shipyard. Then there has to be a separate EIR for the shipyard, and that's a whole different track.
By the way, we've provided-
But you have not cut off the possibility for ever having a shipyard at that location.
By saving the water slip.
By saving those water slips.
And so we gave you a schedule of what we think it would take for us, and it's sort of at the end, what it would take for us to do the term sheet, to do the EIR/ EIS, go through all the agencies, it's at the end of the chart, and that schedule, I think, is real, is reasonable, can be met. We could be done with that processing of the shipyard before the Army Corps needs to make sort of the final decision, do we build the big wall or not? And that's the window of opportunity that we think the city should not let slip by.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Linda, I'm going to let you slip in here before I bring in Geraldine and the port staff and the commission, and if you want to take five minutes.
Great, thank you.
Tell us who you are.
It's barely still morning, so my name is Linda Dishman, and I'm the executive director of the Los Angeles Conservancy. The Conservancy first began our efforts to save the Southwestern Marine Shipyard four years ago, when the port-
The only reason is not because our solution cannot be logistically done, or physically done, or doesn't work. It's because the Army Corps appears to say, and they may, when they look at it more closely, they may change their mind on that, appear to say, that, that wall you want to build, the 30-something-foot-tall wall that's going to be below the water level, we need to do a whole study on that that's going to delay everything? We don't think that's necessary, and that's the hiccup right there. If they're willing to get past that, as everyone seems to want them to, because no one in here is against the shipyard, they're against delay in channel dredging.
Right, right.
If they can get past that, everyone is a winner.
Right.
Everyone is a winner.
You take the dirt, you build a different kind of containment, and you move on. And then, you study this idea of the shipyard. Then there has to be a separate EIR for the shipyard, and that's a whole different track.
By the way, we've provided.
But you, but you have not cut off the possibility for ever having a shipyard at that location.
By saving the water slip.
That's what, by saving those water slips.
And so, we gave you a schedule of what we think it would take for us, and it's sort of at the end, what it would take for us to do the term sheet, to do the EIR, EIS, go through all the agencies, it's at the end of the chart, and that schedule, I think, is real, is reasonable, can be met. We could be done with that processing of the shipyard before the Army Corps needs to make sort of the final decision, do we build the big wall or not? And that's the window of opportunity that we think the city should not let slip by.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Linda, I'm going to let you slip in here before I bring in Geraldine and the port staff and the commission, and if you want to take five minutes.
Great, thank you.
Tell us who you are.
It's barely still morning, so.
Yeah.
My name is Linda Dishman, and I'm the Executive Director of the Los Angeles Conservancy. The Conservancy first began our efforts to save the Southwestern Marine Shipyard four years ago, when the port, when the port proposed to demolish the.
You had to keep, you had to keep that one slide up, that, I think it's just, it's good to keep referring to it.
And I just want to reiterate that the port did propose to demolish this historic shipyard, which I think is very important, because it shows that, in their, in their thinking, that this was not anything they needed to keep for the future. The port's own consultants determined this complex to be eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. They are the last vestige of San Pedro's once mighty World War II shipbuilding industry. This is LA's connection to Rosie the Riveter and America's response to defending itself. These are the buildings where this history happened. Once they are gone, the people who worked in these buildings, their families, and all of us, lose a tangible touchstone to the stories of that history. Our experience is that when buildings are vacant, they have a much higher chance of demolition than those in active use. When Gamble came forward with their plan to rebuild a shipyard on the side and reuse the historic buildings, I will tell you, we were thrilled. Gamble has diligently tried to satisfy the port that not only is their business proposal viable, but that it will not delay the channel deepening project. Both Gamble and the Conservancy had the chance to delay the channel deepening project at the EIR stage over a year ago. Instead, we worked to find a solution, and the port entered into an MOU to work exclusively with Gamble and the Conservancy. I think it's very important to reiterate, Gamble and the Conservancy could have delayed the channel deepening project, and if ever, if there's a testament to the commitment that we don't want to delay the channel deepening, it was the decision we made at that really key point. During the period of.
Because you could have filed a lawsuit, and.
We felt that the EIR was vulnerable, because the loss of the shipyards, the loss of the slips, would in fact impact the future for the historic shipyard.
And you were willing to set that aside with the agreement to enter into the MOU to see if we could work.
Right. I think the Conservancy and Gamble has been very consistent in wanting to be proactive in finding a win-win solution, but I do really view that as a defining moment, that no one should be questioning the intent here, because we had that opportunity and, and really used, wanted to go in another direction. In reviewing, one of the things that, during the MOU, it was the cost of the, it was the business plan, and then the dirt. In reviewing the cost estimates for rehabilitation of the historic buildings prepared by Gamble versus that prepared by the port's consultants, it is striking but not unusual that the numbers are so different. When you want to demolish a building, it is common to produce extremely large numbers for the rehabilitation costs. We see this in EIRs all the time. In looking at the Gamble numbers, it is clear that the buildings will be used for industrial purposes, and that the numbers reflect that. The buildings will house their historic use, so a wholesale adaptation is unnecessary. With regard to the dirt, the port has found a ready ally in the Army Corps of Engineers. The port and the Army Corps have a close working relationship. In fact, the Army Corps characterizes the port as their client. Given that close relationship, it is our belief that if the port wanted to do the Gamble project, the Army Corps would find a way to cooperate and make it happen. The port states that filling in the slips does not preclude a shipyard at the site. While technically true, it is highly unlikely that the port would allow a shipyard to keep ships in the main channel while undergoing repair. That would leave only one option, to build new slips somewhere else on the site, which would threaten one, several, or most of the historic buildings on the site. So, we really do believe that the loss of the slips means that the likelihood of a shipyard at this site is not very good. From the outset, the Conservancy has believed, and we still believe, that there are opportunities for a win-win solution that will enable the port to complete the channel deepening project on time, and provide green jobs in a preserved historic shipyard, and that's really what the City of LA deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. I really appreciate it. It's been really interesting to work with you through all this. I never really thought, thought I would see the, the Conservancy working on a shipyard. But it's been very interesting. And I think what you said is really at the heart of everything that we've all been doing. It just seemed like such a great idea. It seemed like such a win-win, to preserve this historic piece of San Pedro's port history, you know, and bring even a better, newer, more state-of-the-art shipyard to the port. That's really at the heart of what, and preserve, again, a great piece of our history. Thank you. Okay. Why don't we bring up now Dr. Nats, and Mike, if you want to come up, and Cindy, you want to come up, and I know Dave's here too?
Thank you, Councilwoman. There's never been a more strategically important time for the Port of Los Angeles. There's been a lot of speakers who have already spoken about the Panama Canal, so I'm not going to go through all that again. I, I thought it might be instructive for the audience that, right now, the canal is limited to ships that handle about 5,000.
I guess, I, I just would think that we pretty much have made the case, that no one wants to delay the channel deepening. I don't think you, anybody really needs to make that case anymore, because I don't think I would push for anything that did that, I wouldn't approve it, I wouldn't support it. So, I, I think I'd rather maybe just hear, you know, why this didn't work, or, or maybe what, what you thought we were entering into with the MOU, or taking what everybody said, you know, that we really were hoping, the best and the brightest minds.
Right.
Could figure this out. So, maybe, you know, tell us, you know, why you came to the final conclusion, and then, from the port staff, why you recommended it to the commission, then I'm going to ask the commissioners, you know, what, what was, you know, what, what case was made for you all that, that you made your decision? So, I, I really don't think we need to talk anymore about making the case for the importance of dredging the channel. Everyone gets that. There's not one person in this room that does not believe that or want that. And I think every, I think the President talked about, I think we all ought to really focus on making our port more competitive. How do we do that even more? What more infrastructure do we need to build in the future to make us more competitive? And I think landside congestion is a whole nother issue, and I think a lot of cargo gets diverted from the Port of LA because of landside congestion. And we need to really fight for those transportation dollars that build our infrastructure around the Port of Los Angeles and Long Beach, the bridges, the freeways, the SR-47, I mean, all that is a whole nother case. So, for me, I really want to figure out why this didn't work, and, and what about some of these solutions that we keep hearing weren't viable, didn't work, and why are we shutting the door on, on filling in these last two remaining slips at Southwest Marine? I think that's where, where I want you to talk to me.
Right, right. And I have revised my comments. I'm not going to repeat things that were repeated by other speakers about the canal. And as you have said, the dredging project is underway, but I want to make it very clear that moving forward with the Gamble project does threaten the dredging project. To revise our project in order to accommodate the shipyard proposal with this vertical wall sheet pile system, we'll take a full environmental review, and the Army Corps has told us, they will shut down the dredging project for that process. And the reason is, the permitting agencies have not accepted this vertical wall system. It took us five years to get the site that we're using for contaminated sediment with the dike structure permitted by the agencies. Now, there'd have to be a process going through those same agencies, the Water Quality Control Board, the Coastal Commission, the Contaminated Sediment Task.
Just for this different figuration of the wall.
Figured. The Coastal Commission was very clear that that vertical wall system has never been used to contain contaminated sediments. They were uncomfortable with that, they asked for more information. Gamble was going to supply additional design information, that, that never happened. And then, given the recent press about the failure of the vertical wall system within the last several weeks in Alaska, it's going to make it more difficult for the Coastal Commission to really accept an untried method in this area for containing contaminated sediments. So, Councilmember, as you know, we've spent thousands of hours trying to find that win-win. It would be great to not have to make a choice. We could not find the solution that would not result in a very long regulatory review process to change our design, and would not affect the dredging project. So, ultimately, we felt that the board had to really make a choice. As staff, we recommended to the board that when you weigh these two things, the impact on five of our eight terminals, the effect on jobs, our competitiveness versus the proposal by Gamble, that it was clear our recommendation had to be support the greater economic good that the port brings. The Army Corps is really going to go into detail explaining why some of the ideas that Mr. Resnick proposed is not going to work, but I really think that I have to step back and respond to something that was asked by council, which is, how did we get here in this situation? And Mr. Resnick alluded to that, that Gamble had, had kind of brought this idea up before we entered in the MOU. In actuality, in February 2006, we went out for competitive proposals to find a caretaker to take care of the Southwest Marine site, a vacant shipyard, to really promote it for filming, because that's basically what it had been used for. Gamble was selected, and they did that for us for three years. In February 2009, Gamble submitted an application to the port for a development permit to use that site for film production, ship repair, a marine fueling station, and fish processing. In that application, Gamble identified the potential for jobs as ranging from 25 to 200 to 400, depending on how they use the property. At that time, Gamble had been marketing the site as Southwest Studios, and the next month, the port denied Gamble's application, pointing out that designating a site permanently for filming is inconsistent with the Coastal Act, although we happen to love filming down in the port around our activities. The next month, the board approved the final supplemental EIR, EIS for the dredging project. Gamble Industry never commented on that document. They appeared at the meeting with the concept for the Southwest Marine site that now focused on shipbuilding and repair. They subsequently appealed the board's certification to the City Council, along with the LA Conservancy. And let me point out, Linda Dishman is correct. The port had done an EIR to demolish the, the shipyard buildings. The site is under a, we're under an order, along with the current owner, for cleanup of the site, and we were proceeding under that process. Linda Dishman and the Conservancy raised issues about the historic structures. We ultimately never certified that document, and we agreed with the Conservancy that at the appropriate time, we would study the reuse of the buildings. To resolve the appeal process, we entered into the MOU with Gamble in June 2009. We worked together with them. The MOU basically said you had to find something that wouldn't affect the schedule for the dredging project, and it shouldn't cost the, the port any more money. We were never able to find that solution. Gamble's negotiating period expired, but yet we still kept working with them. We, we looked at disposal of the dredge material in the Port of Long Beach. Because none of those things really worked out, we made our recommendation to the board, and it's very clear that everyone understands what our recommendation to the board was, and what it actually means. We recommended that the board not designate the Southwest Marine site as a shipyard. That doesn't mean we don't like shipyards, that doesn't mean, a shipyard is not possible in our port, but this design in this location at this time would have impacted our dredging project, and we recommended the board not designate the site as a shipyard. So, what does that really mean? It means that the land use that is already designated for that site by the Coastal Commission stays in effect, and that land use is designated other. That was because we have not yet gone through the planning process for Terminal Island to formally designate.
But why was that, why was that important if, if some of what port staff said was, you could build a shipyard there without the, the deep water slips? Why was it important to call out that it absolutely was not going to be designated as a shipyard?
Gamble basically kept with their same design throughout the process. They made some modifications, but the goal was to really minimize fill in the slips, and in their plan, it was incompatible with the amount of area we needed for disposal of dredge material. So, they couldn't have their scheme the way they wanted.
Yeah, but not their scheme, but I mean, why was that important to have the commission say this site, under no circumstances, would be a shipyard?
Because the MOU basically said that the board would take a series of steps. The first one was to designate the land use as a, for.
That's what I mean.
But, but let me just clarify. We did not say this shall never be designated as a shipyard. We said at this time, we are not designating it as a shipyard. That does not fore.
Yeah, why was that important? Why was that important to make that designation?
Because that was what the parameter of the MOU had, had set forth. So, we, in terms of what was presented to us.
But you could have designated it as a shipyard and not had, quote, this design.
That's a possibility, and there's still that possibility as we do a new master plan for the entire site.
Right. Um, let me, let me.
That's not foreclosed.
Let me ask, I mean, I was kind of watching, obviously, the process for 18 months, and had some regular reports in this committee.
Right.
Uh, my staff sometimes sat in on, in many of the meetings. It seemed like Gamble was always trying to figure out a solution, and then the port would analyze their solution. Did, did the port staff ever come up with their own solution, or an alternative to the dredge material being dumped in that way, in those slips? Or was it really just always sort of analyzing what Gamble came up with?
Well, I mean, we were trying to accommodate Gamble's concept, so we did analyze what they came up with, and I think you'll know, we reported back once to this committee, that our own engineering team had felt that, you know, the design was workable, it was seismically adequate. To respond to the question about what did we do for 18 months, we then spent time with Gamble.
No, no, no. My question was, did the port staff ever kind of go back to their, their desks, and, and did you guys ever come up with maybe a, a different alternative? Even though I know you, you studied it, obviously, in the EIR, but once you heard the councils wish that we had a win-win here, and we could bring a shipyard to this location, did the port staff ever come up with an alternative?
Madam Chair, Mike Christensen with the Port of LA. Shortly after the MOU was executed, we, we were working with some of the Gamble members about the possibility of maybe a recessed dike, about sinker lift operations that could lift ships out of the water rather than using the dry docks. There was some dialogue there. Gamble subsequently decided that they did not want to do that, they wanted a dry dock operation, so we went down that path. When the issue arose of the change in the quantity that Mr. Resnick brought up, we offered some suggestions about some alternate configurations on the vertical steel wall system. So, I think, you know, as I reported to you, Councilmember, actually, almost a year ago today, in this committee, we did have some successes, and I think that, I, I have to hand it to the Gamble team, they worked very hard on this, and I think we also worked very hard. We put in thousands of hours of effort on a part of port staff. We had some successes, and that was through a give-and-take process. We ran a workshop for the Gamble team on harbor fill issues, on sediment issues, on on wharf and construction issues, to try to bring them into our world a little bit. We, we saw a lot of frustration from them on the regulatory and permitting issues. We brought them with us to the Contaminated Sediment Task Force meetings. We introduced them to, to the Coastal Commission staff. We basically.
But did you ever put the request in yourself for, you know, permits, or, you know, analyzing these things? I mean, taken more than just kind of introducing them. I mean, did, did, did the port say, we want, we're really looking at building the shipyard here, and, and here's what we're analyzing, and, and we're putting in the request for the, for the permits, or the, or the applications, or, you know what I'm saying? It seemed a little like you were letting, letting Gamble make the requests and, and do, do the work on potential reviews of those, instead of you putting the full weight of the Port of Los Angeles, saying, we want to do this.
Well, we attended all the meetings with the regulatory agencies. I think it was important for us to be there and not just send Gamble off to go meet with agencies on their own. We were with them at every step of the way, bringing them through the process, which is really part of what we felt was, was the cooperation that, that the MOU called for. So, we were with them every step.
That's correct. And, and Councilmember, we, we engaged our own consultant, spent a couple hundred thousand dollars of port money doing analysis, giving some direction on some of the structures. However, the process really needed to get to a point where it showed a design. We never did get a design. We never did get a design that could really be progressed. And as I reported to you a year ago, while we had some limited success working and collaborating on structural issues, we never reached the point where we could get past some of the real key schedule issues, which were at the center point--
And one of the things that I said I was going to ask, did you ever have a conversation with the Army Corps about this, particularly that 105 days, where you might change how you built the rock dike?
In terms of the latest proposal that Mr.--
Uh-huh.
Yes, we did, council member. And in fact, that was addressed to our commission in the December 16th meeting, specifically the idea of putting a temporary containment system that Mr. Resnick had alluded to, that you could bring all of the contaminated berth dredging into the slips and hold it. That was addressed by the Corps to our commission in December.
And what did the Corps say?
Basically, paraphrasing, and you can ask them here in a minute, but paraphrasing what they said, it's the same kind of regulatory pathway, and therefore encourages the same delays that a wholesale change in the permanent configuration would have entailed.
Let me ask you about, in the EIR, you clearly studied. I think everyone just hates the fact that you're dumping this dirt in those slips. I think that's just what gets to everybody. It's like, of all the places in all the world that you could dump this dirt, did it have to be in these two remaining operational deepwater slips at the Port of Los Angeles? Where else did you look to dump this dirt? And why was there no other place to dump this dirt? What was wrong with your alternatives? And I know it was a five-year process that you went through trying to find a place to dump this dirt, but it just, I think it just gets to everybody that this had to be the only location to dump it, and what that means in terms of the future of a potential shipyard.
I'm not sure how well you can see this slide, council member, but the red dots on this slide are all of the locations in the harbor that were examined, and outside the harbor, in fact, that were examined for the disposition of the dredge material that was contaminated or unsuitable for ocean disposal. Every one of those was studied in a pretty fair amount of detail. Every one of those was run by the resource agencies, both federal and state, to see if we could figure out what our options were. And for a lot of different reasons, all of which were contained in the supplemental EIS and EIR, they were all--
So there were two other sites you studied for this?
No, there were 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. There was about eight sites that we studied for the disposition of this material.
Eight sites?
Yeah. Including the Anchorage Road facility, a CDF at the Northwest Slip.
And what didn't work for those? Like the Anchorage Road one? When you look on a map, it seemed to be, how many acres is that?
I guess the Anchorage Road site is probably 10 acres, depending on what part of the site you were talking about. Significant community pushback, in fact, a commitment on the part of the board during the midstream of this, that we were going to close the Anchorage Road site and look at reuse on that.
Yeah, that was a PCCAC recommendation that the board adopted, reuse that.
A lot of environmental habitat impact issues on some of the sites, a lot of pushback from--
There was one site that, Pier 300, was that one of the sites you looked at?
Yes, it was. In fact, you can kind of see that on this slide in the middle.
Again, from a L.A. person's point of view, that looked like a great spot. It would help to, you know, increase, you know, Pier 300. Seems like that would fit in with future expansion plans of the port.
In fact, that was our desire, was to--
What was wrong with that site?
The problem with the Pier 300 site is it encroached on sensitive habitat that is in that sea plain lagoon area, and we had--
Were you talking about the leesterns?
The leestern foraging area, the eelgrass sites. We were basically shut down by U.S. Fish and Wildlife and Fish and Game, and they said, "No."
I think another factor was the fact that the slips themselves had contamination. So the regulatory agencies looked at that as, you know, killing two birds with one stone, you're covering the contamination as well as entomizing this other.
We're saving birds in one place, but we're killing two birds with one stone on somewhere else.
I think it's important to note that, councilwoman, that the slips, the historic legacy contamination in those slips is substantial, and we are under orders to clean up as we sit down.
So you were thinking we could contain the contaminated soil within the slips, which you have to do anyway, apparently, and so--
And it's not just us saying that, and I think as--
You were told to--
As Dr. Nats had mentioned, with the very best efforts that we could put forth, with every resource we could muster, and with as much cooperation as we could get from the Corps of Engineers, it took us five years to go through this process. And there were lots of cooks in that kitchen, and those are federal agencies, state agencies, local agencies. Heald Bay had a big say in this. You know, what it's going to take to dispose of sediment, sediment disposal is always the linchpin of a dredging plan. We look at our neighbors to the north in Oakland. It took them 20 years to get their 45-foot program approved. So it took us a long time to work through each one of these, a lot of examination. This, like I say, several of these were things that we wanted to do. We would love to have seen that Pier 300 fill, but it was not to be because of agencies.
Did you take the, and at that point, was it only 80,000 cubic yards, or was it the 163?
It's always been about 3 million cubic yards--
No, for the point that's going into the slip.
The balance between how much of that material was contaminated to the point where open ocean disposal is not an option has always been based on estimates. The best estimate we had at this time was that about 80,000 of the 3 million was unsuitable for ocean disposal. That's mainly the material that's in the berth dredging areas, which I think you've heard before are the ones that are most needed by our customers in the first phase to get the larger ships in.
And I'm sure you looked at splitting that up, you know, 40,000 maybe on Pier 400, 40,000 on Anchorage Row, but none of that, none of that worked.
It was all included in this analysis with tremendous detail--
I mean, you can see, I mean, you can see, and I don't, I mean, this has been very difficult, but I know you can hear, you know, 3 million cubic yards and only 80,000 or maybe 163,000 is all we're talking about. And it just, it's a, I've said this before, it's a crying shame. It's a crying shame that the only place that was suitable was these two deepwater slips for a lot of reasons, for the historic preservation reason, and again, for the idea of shutting up the possibility of building a shipyard at that site. It's a tough pill to swallow, I think, for a lot of people. And I think you know that, and that's why I think we really were hoping something could work out. So at the end of the day, you felt like every rock site has been turned.
Yeah, and you know, we like to be problem solvers.
I know, I know, and you are, I know.
It wasn't possible. We felt it actually came down to a choice, picking, you know, not a win-win, but having to pick one over the other, and that was the basis of our recommendation.
And we thought Long Beach was going to be a miracle that came in the middle of the process. All of a sudden, Long Beach is building the Middle Harbor. They actually needed dirt, and many of us felt like that could have been the answer. What happened with that proposal?
Well, we applied to dispose of all of the material from the, you know, in the Long Beach Middle Harbor fill. We went back and forth, and Mike could probably fill in. Ultimately, they rejected our unsuitable material. They would have loved to take the clean material, the surcharge material, but we couldn't give that material without, because it was using, being used to cap the unsuitable and contaminated material. So we couldn't allow them to sort of cherry pick our good material and then just leave us with the contaminated--
But about the 160,000 that's in question? I thought they were willing to take that.
No, council member, they were willing to take the material that is presently on the surcharge of China shipping. That's basically the clean sand. They were unwilling to take the 160,000 cubic yards of material unsuitable for ocean disposal from our berth dredging, and particularly, they were unwilling to take the material that is currently in those two slips, which would have to be dealt with if we were going to leave that as open water.
Now, okay, let me go to the commission, and Cindy and Dave, you know, what convinced you?
Well, I think, as you in the committee have had updates and been down at the commission meetings when we have scheduled this, the commission was pushing the staff to work out under the rubric of the MOU. That was clear. We had entered into it in good faith, all sides had entered into good faith. And in fact, I think, interestingly, I wasn't here when the MOU was signed, but inherited it and did indicate, as we had initially gotten some reports, we were getting reports from our staff and from Gamble that were separate interpretations of what the regulatory agencies were saying. And from early on in the process, we indicated that we ought not to be going separately. We should go in partnership. So as I think you asked, the staff, did we just send them on their merry way? No, we went with the staff because we were learning at the same time. We looked at this from the point of, obviously, as you say, the Channel Deepening Project. We looked at it from the point where we had been under contract. We had had a Channel Deepening Project started in the early 2000s. It was stopped by the Army Corps when this additional contaminated soil was found. It took us four years to analyze those eight sites. We had to go through, we were exactly where Gamble is today. We said, "Oh, there's just this minor modification. Let us manage it under a regulatory process, or just a minor amendment. It doesn't need to be a whole new EIR, it doesn't need to be all this." The Army Corps and the Coastal Commission told us, "No, you are dealing with the worst of the worst material." I mean, using the word "unsuitable" to me sounds euphemistic. This is contaminated, legacy oils, the kind of muckiest stuff that anybody would want to deal with. It's probably, you know, in a sanitary landfill, one of the worst classes of materials to deal with. We were delayed already for years by way of this dirty, dirtiest of dirt. When we started hearing a couple of things, the alternative solution, our engineers said, "Looks fine to us, this vertical wall looks fine to us, let's go take it to Coastal, let's go take it to Army Corps." Coastal said, "Gee, it's never been used to contain the dirtiest of dirts. It's been used elsewhere to contain dirt." We think we're familiar with it, but as was indicated just recently on January 15th in the Anchorage Daily Journal, listen to this, "The completion date for the massive dock replacement at the Port of Anchorage has been pushed back to 2021 from a 2011 date due to escalated problems with the sheet pile wall." They have banked their whole dock improvement on this construction, and it says, "Numerous sheets of steel that were planted in Cook Inlet as part of the dock expansion have been ripped up and now lie stacked and twisted in the warped piles at the port." So that's a real-time, real-day analysis of what's going on with somebody who did commit to this project. And in Coastal Commission's defense, they said, "We still think geologically it may work. We need more information, and it hasn't been provided. And we need verification that it can work with contaminated soil." So that was a hesitancy. Coastal Commission then said, "We're going to need more time, more effort." Army Corps, who was part of this, and Contaminated Sediment Task Force, which is a multi-agency task force, was saying the same thing, essentially prove this. And so we turned to Gamble, who is the entity that is planning this, and said, "Help us prove it, show it can work, provide this additional information." Gamble stopped pursuing that course temporarily because Long Beach came along, and Long Beach was potentially the answer to all our problems. They wanted dirt, we could take the dirt. Not only would it help preserve the slips, but it would save the port money and the Army Corps contract money.
Right.
Then Long Beach came back and says, essentially, "Well, we didn't mean we wanted to take your dirty dirt. We'll take all the good stuff." So we were all thrown back to a loss, and that's when, at the, I won't say the 11th hour, but towards the end of the process, Gamble said, "Well, we understand this regulatory concern. Let us come up with a temporary solution. Let us put this behind a vertical wall--
Right.
--temporarily while we work through all of this."
Right.
It was the Army Corps who said to us, "Essentially, it's the same system, and this same system needs to be analyzed, and under our analytical process, as a regulatory agency, we're going to have to do exactly what we did in 2005, stop the contract and go through a two-to-three-year regulatory process." When I heard that, I mean, I'm just going to tell just a little side story. You know, I was very, very involved in the master plan at LAX--
Yes, you were.
--when I was on the council. And as we brought that master plan in, in 2005, coincidentally, we were told by those who said, "Oh, it can be delayed, and we'll do a new environmental analysis, and it'll only take 18 months, and we'll have a new master plan, and off we go." Well, luckily, the council adopted the master plan as it had been, but by way of litigation, it was stopped in a lot of ways in a settlement. And the 18 months that was promised in 2005 for a re-analyzed master plan for LAX in 2011 has not been done. So once you hear regulatory agencies, FAA in that case, Army Corps in this case, talking about a fast-track regulatory process that might take two to three years, when we knew ours already took four previously, we were just not willing to gamble. We could not afford that risk, not with what we are hearing from every other port in the country. Not only what we are hearing, I thought today, that of the operator ports, that operators who sent letters in today, hearing the one from Evergreen, saying that today, because the depth of their, at their terminal is only minus 45, that they now have port pilots who aren't able to bring their ships in today because of the depth, that they don't have enough depth. So not only are we looking at the bigger ships coming in, we are today, by any threat of delay to this project jeopardizing our ship--
Let me ask you, on the Channel Deepening Project, does this actually connect to the terminals? Or is it just, does this project allow for the ships to dock at the terminals?
Yes.
So it's all one, it's all one project?
Right. There's a federal share of the project, and there is what is called the local share. And so we pay for some of the work that is considered the local share, which is the berth dredging, but the project under construction will dredge those three berths.
And the completion project of this Channel Deepening is the date?
Yeah, end of 2012.
So December of 2012?
Yeah.
And with the end of that, the ships, the bigger ships will come in, and even the ones that can't get in now will be able to dock at the terminals?
Yes, and we have some of our shipping operators who are talking about already ordering the bigger ships, planning on their ships starting to come here, the bigger ships.
How many ships are in production at this time?
I don't really know that. The point I was going to make at the very beginning just is that the Big Locks Project will now be able to, when that's done, they'll be able to get ships as large as 12,000 TEUs through the--
And when, yeah, when are they being built now, or?
Oh, well, the 12,000 TEU ships are out there. You know, we can already bring those in, say, to Pier 400, Pier 300, so--
So we're talking about--
Taking them up the channels.
Right, all the way, to all of our terminals.
I mean, we had a similar issue at the airport, clearly. I mean, we configured gates for the next generation of aircraft, the Airbus A380, the Boeing 787. But we did find the construction schedule of those larger aircraft arriving at LAX didn't exactly follow what they had urged us to do, but we're ready. I mean, that's, we configured the gates at the Bradley Terminal to accommodate them.
The difference is, and you're right, that right now, there, those big ships can get to our outer terminals, but unlike the International Terminal at LAX, which every airline can have an access to the International Terminal, in the port, each terminal operator is their own, so it would create some disadvantage among, and competition among them, and some of those who might be disadvantaged might just as easily go, not like the Long Beach, might go elsewhere. So we've got to create an equal playing field at all times for all of our operators because they all are competing and bringing in the jobs that--
Right, and let me talk to Mr. Jobs himself, Dave Aron. You know, why don't you tell us a little bit about, you don't have to stand.
No, I'd like to stand.
Oh, okay. You know, I think--
You've got some control here, but not all of it.
One of the things, why don't you make it really clear to folks, you know, because we talk about these 10,000 jobs, I mean, we've kind of been banding-- I mean, we've kind of been banding that number around, 10,000 jobs for the Channel Deepening, 1,000 jobs for the shipyard. Help people understand, you know, what does that, what does that mean? I mean, why are there 10,000 jobs directly associated to the Channel Deepening Project? Are those current jobs that we're going to be able to keep? Are those jobs that we're going to add on top of the current, you know, dock workers? Are we going to get new members in the ILW? Are we going to be able to accommodate 10,000 jobs? Explain what that number means.
Well, basically, when I came into the industry, Jojo...
Why don't you say your name for the record?
Yeah, Dave Arion, Port Commissioner. And first, I want to thank Janice for nominating me to Port Commission and putting me in the middle of this doo-doo.
You're welcome.
You know, a lot of times when I'm in Commission meetings now, I try to focus, you know, on what's going on. And sometimes I'm over in Hilo on the big island, you know, and I wonder, why did I accept this? But once you take a job on, you got to take it seriously. And I do. When I came into the industry, Jojo, some of the others, there were 2,600 members in Local 13, there were 320 members in the Perks Local and maybe, what, 150, 200 in your local, the Formans Local. Today, we have 7,000 jobs in the Longshore Local 13. We have about 1,150 in the Perks Local and 400, 400 in Formans Local. So immediately, we have 9,000 jobs. And then we have another 5,000, 1,000 casuals and really only about 5,000 of them, I think, are really working right now.
So say that number again, you have five?
5,000 casuals plus about 9,000 will be considered to be registered workers. So immediately, just affecting Longshore, not counting the truck drivers and everybody else, you know, there's 14,000 jobs. When we throw out these numbers, and then everybody throws out the numbers, the future of the industry is based on a lot of things. But the real future of the industry, like when I come on the bridge last Saturday, I looked out and I saw four new cranes coming in for China Shipping. And I know that each one of those cranes, you know, creates another 500 or 100 jobs or they won't be coming in. And that's long-term. We're the only union that has secure jobs, got guarantees, got a full contract, got a pension and health and welfare, and we're not going to close down. We've got 100 employers in the PMA and half of them could go away and we'd still be working. The difference between us and a shipyard, and I lived through the shipyards, and I saw them all closed down, is no matter how much Gamble puts in and says they're going to be there, they may or they may not, depending on the economy. Longshore's going to be there, the port's going to be there, the truck drivers are going to be there, certain things are going to be there, and that's our secure base and that's what we have to represent. Now, the reason I came today, because I knew everybody else would do a good job, is I see this thing spinning out of control and something you and others on the City Council have paid attention to. In the beginning, you know, this was just a struggle to try to see if we could achieve a shipyard and it was under the control of the Port Commission and City Council. Then I read this report and I get a direct feedback that Resnick and others have gone to Rohrbacher on a congressional basis to look into some kind of investigation, the Army Corps, whatever. It is spinning out of control. You have, you will have no more control over, nor will we. Now, he's a good attorney. I've looked at his record, I know what he does here in LA, and he's going to do what he has to do to represent his clients. That may not be in the interest of the port and the city at this point. This thing has to come to an end. I asked myself, how did we get here? And you know, I listened to Obama's speech and next time Jane calls you up, say you'd like to take someone in.
[laughing]
That's me, because I love to hear one of those speeches.
Yeah, that's quite...
But I'd love to be there. But the reality is, you ask, why did I vote the way I voted? Well, and I want to make this clear, the five commissioners make decisions, not staff. And I just want to point out, and I don't think my friends from Central Council are here right now, it's two of them spoke, it wasn't the staff that made the decision. As one of five votes, I made the decision and I'll stand responsible for that. And people can attack the staff all they want, the commissioners make the decisions. Now, my friends from the Central Council happen to meet at the Harry Bridges Institute every month and we give it to them for free. Basically said they'd like to take it out of our hands and put it into somebody else's hands to make these decisions. That's an attack against my authority. That's an attack against me and I will deal with Central Council and the two of them in a personal, one-on-one. You know, I believe that I made a decision based on what was available to me. I was new. It came up nearly at the second meeting that I was at.
You're not really, you're not really new when it comes to the harbor.
Well, I'm not new, but new on knowing the exact details of the council situation. When I was nominated, you called me and asked me to meet with Gamble. And I did. And I walked away from that meeting and said, we're going to get a shipyard. And I want to tell you that, you know, when I look at it on a broader sense, if we could get a shipyard back in San Pedro, I would feel like I contributed to leaving something behind that we lost 20 years ago. In the 1980s, I participated, along with other labor people, in opposing the plant closures and the deal industrialization of the United States. My generation is leaving behind less than what my father's generation left us. We were an industrial nation and the working class had the ability to work and get a job and my generation had that. And this generation is not leaving that for the next generation. So if we get a shipyard, it's not just a question of 400 jobs. For me, it's a question of bringing back industry and saying that I was part of that.
Right.
So to me, yeah, I was totally impressed with that. But hey, you start listening to the facts and the thing that made my decision, when I asked the Army Corps at that meeting in December, and I went to a third party and they made it clear to me that this would delay. Now, who are you going to believe? I'm listening to the staff and I don't know staff that well. Am I going to believe them? I tried to. I'm listening to Resnick, I'm listening to them, am I going to believe him? Well, this is all credible. I go to the Army Corps and they tell me it's over. And that's why I voted the way I voted. And I wasn't satisfied because I didn't ask enough questions of the Army Corps, did that mean, because I didn't know what questions to ask. So I set up a meeting with them and I asked all those questions. And I spent an hour, hour and a half, and they brought everybody in. And I said, look, just explain the process to me. How do we get where we're going? Whenever you deal with a government agency and you deal with permits and this and this and that, one thing can delay you and turn you back. And so when they finished talking to me, there was no question, it's no longer a question of whether there'll be a delay or not. It's no longer a question, can we have both? We cannot have both at this point in history. And anybody who says anything else is bullshitting you. I listened to the attorney here. You know, the reason, I asked myself, and I asked Rudy, Sabonis, how did they get this MOU? How did they get exclusive rights? How did they get that? How come others couldn't get on it? He told to me that they moved for injunction against initial permits. They're already going to stop the process up if they didn't get what they wanted, Gamble, from day one. So we're back where we started. They started by threatening to undermine the project, the dredging, and that's where they're at today. And anybody sees it any different is bullshitting themselves.
Well, I see it differently and I'm not bullshitting myself, but that's okay. We agree to get...
This is my point.
That's fine. Oh.
Don't worry.
He's okay. He's, he's...
I don't need a police officer standing next to me.
Yeah. ILW and LAPD go way back.
I've impressed by it many times.
All right. I, I, well said, well said, well said.
Let me finish by saying one thing.
Well said.
Janice, you and the City Council got to put an end to this. And hopefully, it comes today. And I would hope that the end of this is that you recommend that the Commission made the right decision. And secondly, and I don't know if this is possible, because I'm not an in-engineer, can there still be a shipyard somewhere in LA? I don't know. But if there can, I will be fighting for it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Well said. Passionate. I mean, clear, and as you, I mean, again, everybody has said it a different way. Everyone has said it a different way. And everyone, at the end of the day, has said the same thing. You know, Channel Deepening is critical to position us in the future. I mean, it's critical. But the idea, and you even said it, the idea of bringing a shipyard back to the Port of Los Angeles makes sense. It's not a bad thing. It's, it's, it's a viable proposal for good-paying, skilled jobs at the harbor. And I mean, you said that again, and I think that's, that's why we're here. That's why we're here. I'm not here because of threat of a lawsuit. I'm not here because I felt anyone bullied me or gave a campaign contribution to me. That's not why I'm here. I'm here because I thought it made sense and it was an option. And it was supported, by the way, by a very diverse group of people from all over that had an interest in bringing this back. There's a lot of history, there's a lot of nostalgia, there's a lot of hopes that we could, in the future, diversify the job portfolio out there at the harbor. So that's, it was always for me about, about that and about bringing more good jobs. I want 10,000 with the Channel Deepening, I want 10,000 and, you know, you know, 500 if I can bring it. If I could bring 500 more jobs, I would. If I could bring 200 more good-paying jobs to Los Angeles, I would. I mean, that's what we're all fighting for, is bringing more jobs. 10,000 is good. I wanted more. I wanted more than 10,000. And, and that's why I'm doing what I'm doing. So let...
Janice, I never, none of my comments ever challenged my belief with you of what your intentions are. We've worked together too long. I know this is what you're about. But this is spinning out of your hands and out of our hands and we need to put an end to it.
Thank you very much. What I thought we would do is, why don't I bring the Army Corps up? Army Corps of Engineers, the acronym is ACE, the ace in the hole for the port. Okay. I mean, let's see both options. I'm just less, less... Where's the rest of the staff? Where's, uh, do you want to make an introduction? Do you want to invite? You should text him a second. Okay. Why don't you all introduce yourselves and tell us who you are?
Well, thank you, Councilwoman. I'm Brian Moore. I'm a Deputy District Engineer for the Corps of Engineers Los Angeles District. With me, I have Mr. Lawrence Minch, who is our District Counsel. To his left is Aaron Allen from our regulatory organization. And to my right is Jim Fields, the Project Manager for the Main Channel Harbor Deepening Project. I'd like to offer a few remarks if I could and narrate a small number of slides that I hope will provide information useful to you on the status of the Main Channel dredging, deepening project, and the present plan for disposal of contaminated and non-contaminated sediments, and the specific plans and schedule for work at berth 243, 245. The first slide, and it's kind of hard to read, I don't know if I can point it. This is an overall map of the Main Harbor Deepening Project. And it's a schematic and it kind of shows you what our plan is. And basically, Corps of Engineers is constructing, deepening these channels to 53 feet. And then there were various disposal sites identified for that earlier. We awarded a contract to start that in 2002. We actually got all the deepening done in the light tan areas. Remaining part here is in blue. And in, in 2004, we had to halt our construction because we ran out of disposal sites. We reached capacity limits and then embarked on a five-year effort to develop some, some new sites. During this period, we also added to the project, and it's hard to read on here, but there's some yellow areas that are on the slide. Those are the berth dredging areas and those are where most of the contaminated sediments come from.
Let me just talk about that channel, that delay in the Channel Deepening. It was a pretty significant delay, five years. How did that happen? Or why did that happen?
Well, it happened because we reached the capacity of the disposal sites, number one. So we had to find new sites that were already, that were not approved. We did a complete environmental impact statement and a feasibility study and detailed...
But why was the project even allowed to go forward if all the, all the disposable sites had not been identified?
Well, at the time, we thought they were identified. As it turned out, as we get into construction, we ran out of capacity in the sites and then had to delay the construction to do a supplemental environmental impact statement to develop and get approval for all the new sites that we needed.
So you can change a schedule without terminating the contract?
We did not terminate the contract, that's correct. We kept that contract open. And frankly, we initially thought the process would be much quicker. We thought we'd be relatively soon in establishing...
You were willing to continue with the contract because...
I'm sorry, I didn't...
I mean, you were willing to not terminate your contract on this Channel Deepening with that kind of new information because you believed in, that the project was still going to happen and just needed some, see what I'm saying?
We thought at the time, the delays would be much, much less than they turned out being.
So you didn't think it was going to be five years?
Yeah, I'm thinking, if you're asking me, what will we do now, what we'd do then, knowing we know now, we probably would have terminated the contract at that time. Had we known it was going to be five years to develop a new plan for disposal, that's a long time to keep contracts high. Frankly, we did a lot of work for the port and other areas with that contractor, for that contract, much more than we normally would have done on any other contract.
Okay.
The berth dredging, as I mentioned, is a port-funded feature. It's part of our construction contract. It's 100% the cost and the obligation of Port of Los Angeles to perform. And so they have chosen to come to us and use our contract to do it. The berth dredging is very significant because we're dredging a channel of 53 feet. The berth dredging is part of the authorized construction project, not part of the federal cost share, though. Without the dredging of the berths, then the national investment in the 53-foot channel doesn't make any sense. So it's a very important part of the project, but is a part that is funded by the port and also the part that generates most, if not all, of the contaminated sediments. In September 2009, we completed the SEIS and the SEIR, Supplemental Environmental Impact Statement and Supplemental Impact Report. And we signed a record decision for the project features that, again, depicted in the slide. The new plan for disposal identified up in this area, the northwest slip, some area for disposal, the shallow water habitat, and then, of course, disposal in berth 243.
And where, where, where's the main work being done right now?
Main work right now is shallow water habitat.
Uh, yeah, the materials from the federal channels going in.
Okay, so right now, we're dredging in the blue area?
Uh-huh.
And moving it to the Cabrillo shallow water habitat.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, pardon me?
Along with the northwest slip.
Along with filling in the northwest. So some of the material from the main channel is going into the northwest slip and also going into the Cabrillo shallow water habitat right now.
So since 2010, last year, is that when it resumed, resumed in July?
Yeah.
It's not been delayed by anything, right? Is that correct?
Since that time, no, there's been no delay whatsoever. We're, we have a schedule from the contractor. As you mentioned, we modified the construction contract in July of 2010 and we're underway with construction. And what I'd like to do, if it'd be helpful, which I think it may be, is to discuss this eight-acre site and exactly what our plans are for that, because that's critical to your discussions and deliberations. And so if I can focus on the charts over here to my left, kind of run through them, it kind of presents a schematic of our schedule and the activities that will occur in the shall, in the berth 243, 245. Now, this first slide, first one at the very top here, this represents a cross section. Take a slice right through the center of berth 243, 245, perpendicular to the main channel.
Mm-hmm.
And then you put it on its side, you're looking at a cross section. So here you have the bottom of the channel, here you have the end of the berth, here you have the, the existing structures on top of it.
That we're talking about.
Exactly. So sliced right down, right parallel to that finger coming out there, right, right down, right parallel, exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
Parallel.
Right, parallel to that, parallel to that. And you turn it on its side and you're looking at what a slice would be right through the water. So we can see the bottom... So, we can see the bottom, we can see the water surface, and you can see the end of the berth. Now, in our plan, what we intend to do then is, our first effort under our construction contract is demolish the piers and decks that exist in right now, and that's underway. And that's been underway for a while. Our next slide here kind of shows the next step in the process, and this is going to take place May 6, July 12. And this is the first major effort in controlling contaminated sediments. We're going to build a rock dike. This is rock coming from Catalina.
Right.
It'll be dumped and build a rock dike about approximately 15 foot tall.
Right.
And that'll be placed, 10,000 tons of rock, that'll be placed May 6 to July 12.
May 6, May 12.
The next slide shows you why we're going to do with that rock dike. We need to develop a foundation to put the substantial structure of the dike upon. To do that, we need to dredge out some of the foundation to create that. Some of that foundation, of course, is contaminated, so we're dredging contaminated sediments at the head of the, at the entrance of those berths, and we'll put those behind the dike. And that's about 60,000 cubic yards. That's about, thinking in terms of about a football field, the material piled 33 feet tall, that's about 60,000 cubic yards.
So, what about this idea that the Army Corps could defer this, like 105 days, where you build this and allow this different configuration to be studied?
Well, I think if I can come back to that question.
Okay.
Just run through this real quick.
Okay.
Because I think these slides are pertinent to that question. So, this is May 13 to May 31, 2011. Then the next step, now that we have a foundation built, now we come in and we actually construct a, you know, the dike about 30 feet tall. It's not the full height of the dike, but it's a dike that's also quarry one rock. This will be done June 22, July 20, and this is the first stage in our plan, so we can actually start bringing in some contaminated sediment. So, this is done in June to July. Then the next stage is, we need to have a filter blanket, a blanket of clean sand against that dike, because contaminants will be placed behind it, and we don't want any possibility of contaminants leaching into the water. So, we bring in 42,000 cubic yards of sand, and this is primarily coming from, I think, the China shipping.
China shipping surcharge, right.
And that's going to take place July 21 to August 5. Now, we're ready to start moving contaminated sediments from the berth dredging areas that I kind of pointed out on the slide. So, in August, around August 6, August 27, we start the first effort of bringing in contaminated sediments from the berth dredging. And that's about around 84,000 cubic yards will come in on that. Now, we're still, all this is still below water, so we're able to actually bring all this in by barge. The top of this dike is below the water surface, they can float a barge in, do bottom dumping, and it makes the construction fairly efficient. Then the next stage of this, stage three, where we bring the dike up to full height, we bring in 180,000 tons of rock from Catalina, construct the full height of the dike, and this brings it now up to about 56 feet tall from the bottom, about 11 feet above the water surface. And this now allows us then to bring in the rest of the contaminated sediments or prepare for that. That's August 29 to November 2. Then the remaining steps are kind of shown in slides seven and eight. And again, we bring in more sand berm to act as a filter. We bring in the remaining contaminated sediments to fill up this layer right here, and we bring in a sand cap on top of that, and on top of that, we put a gravel blanket layer. And then, to consolidate all this material, we finally bring in 163,000 cubic yards of material to act as a surcharge on top of that. So, all this takes place from May of this year, and then we'll finally have all the surcharge in place by the end of May of next year. But this whole sequence of activities is important to our schedule and is also important to the berth dredging part of our plan. So, that kind of gives you a quick overview of how we're progressing on this. Now, I'd like to address, if I could, the process. We believe we have to go through to make, this is the plan. To change the plan requires a process. What is the process? That is something we'd like to kind of go through with you if we could. But before I start on that, I want to say from the outset that we're not commenting on the value of a shipyard.
Right.
It's not the Corps' purview to determine if a shipyard is the right thing to do, not the right thing to do. These are decisions that are rightfully yours, the Port of Los Angeles is, the Harbor Commission, and not the Corps of Engineers. Our obligation, as we see it in Corps of Engineers, is to give you information.
Right.
So, you can make a decision.
Right.
Whatever your decision is, we certainly will move forward with that decision and do the best we can to make it happen.
Let me ask you now, if there was any change, if there was somehow consensus to accommodate one of these solutions to reconfigure the soil, if there was any change at this point, we'd heard that the Army Corps was going to terminate the contract, if there was any change at this point?
Well, I mean, certainly that's an option. You know, we don't know the change, whether they standard the change, or how long it's going to take to affect the change. And as I was saying before, if we had the information we have now and look back five years ago and look at the contract, we may have considered termination at that time. So, it's not clear what we would do until we actually get into the process and find out what the process really involves on that.
Were you asked to explore any of these solutions during the last 18 months? Was the Army Corps ever asked to kind of look at what this would mean to the schedule and if it was possible to continue the channel deepening while looking at any other options for this 163,000 cubic yards?
Yeah, I think as the Port Director, Jody, has pointed out, and Mike Christian pointed out, there's been a lot of review, a lot of meetings, a lot of conferences, a lot of deliberations, a lot of discussions, and certainly, they've included us when it was appropriate in all those discussions. We've also had our own discussions with the folks from Gamble, so we're much more familiar with this proposal now than we would at any proposal that would come to us as an application, and then we start reviewing it then. So, we have a lot of advanced information on that. So, yes, we have. So, let me talk about the changes in what we'd have to do as our process. And we know, as I mentioned, we know that there's been a lot of discussions on the vertical wall containment facility as opposed to the rock dike structure. We participated in a number of pre-application meetings with the contractor, with the city, to advise Port and Gamble. We issued a Department of Army permit in November 2009 for this particular plan we have right now for the eight-acre berth 243, 245 confinement disposal facility. And we are of the opinion that this would require a, to move from that plan to this plan requires a modification of that November 2009 permit.
And what does that mean?
Well, I'm going to go through that in detail. And one thing that we believe, it appears the impetus of this modification is to accommodate a potential shipyard, so that would have to be part of our process in determining this modification. Now, what we would need to do to...
What do you mean? I mean, I thought you said that was kind of like a separate track whether or not the shipyard was going to be there, and that wasn't really...
For any permit application that we are considering, there has to be a purpose and need for performing it, for doing it. The only reason it appears to change from the plan we have now is to accommodate a shipyard. So, in the consideration of the permit process, we would have to do some environmental analysis of a shipyard facility itself. The permit process requires an application to get it started, and that would be from the Port of Los Angeles. That'd be step number one we need to have. The application has to have a number of specific things in it, has to have drawings and sketches and plans, locations and needs, a scheduling, and again, as I mentioned, it would also have to have sufficient information about the use of the facility as a shipyard, so we could do the environmental analysis of that. It also would need to include, in the plan we have now, we're isolating all contaminated sediments, including the ones that exist now in 243, 245. The Gamble proposal does not isolate all those contaminated sediments. So, we'd have to have the indication, the plan, the program for how will those sediments be accommodated in their plan, because that would be important to the permit consideration. We are allowed to...
And could the channel deepening continue while that's happening?
Could the channel, I'm sorry?
Could the channel deepening continue on its schedule while any of this is being analyzed?
Well, the construction, because of the time we think it's going to take to do this analysis, the construction of the contaminated disposal facility, as we see it right now, could not continue. And then that has a domino effect on the elements of the project, because that was a facility that was designated to take berth dredging material from, material from China shipping is going to go there also. So, it has a domino effect in our schedule, and right now, the contractor laid out a schedule that he believes is most efficient and requires, and places this particular effort at this particular point in time. Modifying that means we have to go back to him, renegotiate, and discuss whether or not that would cause a significant delay or not. But it's reasonable to assume that if we are involved in a several-year process to develop and issue a permit for this new facility, then it would have impacts on the schedule for the project. Now, one of the considerations in looking at a modification, is this a minor modification or is this a major modification? And you've heard the discussions, I think, from the Gamble folks, that they view this as a minor modification and should be able to be processed rather quickly. Our preliminary view is that this may be a major modification and require an individual permit process to accomplish. And the reason we're saying that is because we would need to analyze the environmental effects, indirect effects of a shipyard as part of this, number one. We also are required to look at alternatives. I mean, we can't just say this one design is going to be it, we have to have alternatives to that design included in the process also. The air emissions, the cumulative effect on air quality is an issue that we'd have to analyze in the permit process, and that could be...
And how long would that take?
Well, we're thinking, if you roll all this together and look at the coordination that may be required, the fact that there's additional dredge material in the bottom of the berth that needs to be disposed of, the fact that the Coastal Commission staff has come up on the net and has some reservations with this, the fact that we need a coastal consistency permit, we need a regional water quality control board, 401 certification, we need to be able to show all these other agencies that, yes, this is the plan, the plan works, and alternatives is better than other alternatives. So, it could take as much as two years, it could take as much as three years to go through the entire process before we come up and end up with a permit.
That's worse than the City of LA.
Yeah. And again, the process we go through, I mean, considering this would be a major effort, we'd have to have a public notice, we'd have to have, allow for comment period, there may be a requirement for a public hearing, there may not, that's at discretion of the district commander, will we have one or not? And then the real...
What if there was just a sense that the Port of Los, the City of Los Angeles didn't want to preclude the possibility of building a shipyard, but didn't really say, "We're building a shipyard here," but we just wanted to find another way to contain this 163,000 cubic yards of this dirt? You know, we're not going to study it being, we just don't want to cut that off. Maybe we look at this, you know, not this year, not next year, but we just have decided, kind of just, the light bulb came on that, wow, this would be a great spot to build a shipyard. What if we didn't start the process of actually determining that it was a shipyard? What if we just said, "You know what? We changed our mind. We don't want to put the dirt in these slips. We want to preserve these for whatever."
Yeah, I'm assuming you're saying like the Port would come to us and say, "This disposal site is no longer available for any sediments right now."
Right.
So, we would...
No, let's forget the analyzing the shipyard, the EIR, the air emissions, the impact. Let's just say, "We changed our mind. We want to put this dirt somewhere else."
If he said that, I'd have to tell him as his attorney that he doesn't have authority to do that, because the fact is...
He wouldn't have the authority to do that?
That the commander does not have authority to do that. He doesn't have authority, because we have regulations that require us to...
No, I'm saying, what if your client came to you, your client is the city and the port? What if we came to you and said, "We've changed our mind. We don't want to put the dirt there anymore." What would that mean?
I mean, you...
Would that, we're not asking you to analyze a shipyard, all that two- to three-year process that you were talking about. What would that mean?
Well, what you're saying is that...
If we want to reconfigure...
We no longer have a site for contaminated sediment disposal.
Right, or we want to configure it differently.
And so, we have a construction contractor that's under contract to build that site.
Right.
So, automatically, it gives us an issue with the construction contract, in the contractor.
Okay.
And then what do we tell him?
Right.
We don't have another site available, so we need to go through some process...
Okay.
...to develop that other site. And I would submit the process, probably going to be the same amount of time as the process for looking at Gamble alternative. We have to go through environmental effects, we're going to have to look at different alternatives, and then again...
This is without analyzing a shipyard?
We'd have to analyze. And again, the issue we'd be faced immediately is that, well, we analyzed alternatives in the original project, came up with this configuration, and so now, we've already analyzed and said, "This is the best." So, how can we come up and say another alternative is best? So, really, I think it's an issue of time, and also delay on the contract, and puts us in a position of needing to do additional studies and effort to find another solution.
What you're saying, you actually did once, and it didn't really, didn't terminate the contract, but if you knew now that it was going to take that many years, you probably would have.
I'm thinking, and again, it's hard to speculate what we do without knowing the particulars of the situation. We would, we want to keep the contractor moving, as you do. I understand that totally, and we want to do that also. But we have to, I have to be honest with you, we have to consider those kinds of decisions because we're governed by federal regulations and contract laws and procedures, and we can't keep a contract idle and spend government money doing that unless we have a real clear determination of when that's going to be, when the idle is over.
So, your client coming to you and saying, "We changed our mind," doesn't really fall under that category.
Right.
Do you want to add anything to that?
Nothing.
Who are you, for the record?
I'm Aaron Allen. I'm chief of the North Coast Branch, and so my geographic area is the Port of LA, so I have project managers that handle the actual projects. I was actually lucky enough to be the project manager for the channel deepening, so I was the person that handled the processing of the original permit application. And one thing I did want to add is, you know, we talk about a lot of regulations, and, you know, under Section 404 of the Clean Water Act, you know, we don't take filling open water lightly.
Right.
You know, we actually are, under regulations, supposed to avoid and minimize impacts to open water. And if you actually read our record of decision, the reason why we were able to justify under our regulations filling that eight-acre site was, A, that there was contaminated sediment there, and then B, it was going to be used to confine other contaminated sediment. And so, one of the complications with the permit mod that would leave the sediment in place, that was going to be covered up, is that the justification for that fill is no longer there, or part of the justification for that fill, and that's part of what triggers the reanalysis under the 404B1 guidelines. And I was part of the channel deepening, and I will say that finding disposal sites for sediment is tough. I mean, we went through a lot of sediment disposal sites. There was the pure 300... There is the pure 300, we started with that, there was a big battle over that. And the reason why it took five years is because we kept going through sites and there were environmental issues or there were technical issues. So I won't say that, you know, we jumped on these sites. This is what came out of the process and it was a difficult process.
You know, I'm going to ask one question, and then I need to take a quick break, not to talk to anybody in the hallway, nobody better follow me to the bathroom, but I need to take a quick break. But you didn't really answer it, but I know one of the things that was proposed was, you know, defer that building of that permanent rock wall. Can you, you know, go forward with the initial phase of putting the material there, but not build the permanent rock wall until the end? And would that change anything? Would you have to get a modification approved? I'm going to give you time because I'm going to go to the bathroom so you can think about your answer while we move forward with the project. I think on the schedule, it's 105 days of work for the contractor. And could you move that schedule around? So you put it there, you build the initial toe berm, I think we're calling it, but you don't build the final rock, what are we calling it, the rock wall, until, again, we've sort of sorted out some of these issues. So we haven't changed anything, you could still, you know, there is a drop dead deadline when you have to build that, but that's, you know, is there a way to defer that to the end of the project and not where it is right now on the schedule while we kind of sort out some of these issues? Give me a quick recess and no one could lobby me, okay? I'm just going to the bathroom, all right. What about, okay, all right. Okay, what about this idea of the, you know, on your schedule, it's 105 days, and can you defer that to the end before you sort of cap the whole thing while we still figure out if this is possible?
Yeah, and that's one reason why I kind of wanted to go through this initial presentation, show you, it's not just the construction in the berth 243, 245, it's where material's coming from. It's also scheduled in the contractor's schedule to accommodate other things that the contractor-
No, but I think the dirt still goes there. The dirt still goes there. Everything's on schedule. Building the toe berm, I think, I'm not an engineer clearly, but the idea of permanently capping it with this rock wall, can you defer that piece? And if not, you know, so everything goes forward, the dirt still goes there, you're not trying to find an alternate location, but you just don't forever, you know, close it off permanently.
I assume you're talking about-
Could you wait until, you know, the end of the project?
What you're saying, we do this toe dike you're suggesting-
Right.
But not build, not start to build a site.
Right, right.
And right now, that's scheduled to start in June 22nd, July 30th. And that's, on that schedule, to allow for material to come off of China shipping and to allow for material to come from the berth dredging. So this thing is so interrelated, these activities are related, that a lot of these activities end up being on what's called the critical path, except you slip one-
Right, where's that schedule? Where's that schedule? Because I'm starting to learn the schedule, actually. Okay. And where was it? Oh, I had it like highlighted on my other schedule. Okay. So it's the, yeah, it starts-
If we don't build a rock dike, we can't put the material there from China shipping, if we don't tip that, we can't put material there from the berth dredging. I mean, the activities are so interrelated, it's just difficult to say that you can move it around and delay it without affecting the project.
See, during the construction process, the Clean Water Act requires us to sequester all the material. It's not as permanently contained as it will be when we put a cap on it, but we would be prohibited from simply taking the contaminated sediments, dumping them into the site, and then building the rock wall later. You'd rather, what we do is we build the wall up, put some sediment on the bottom, and then build it up further, and that's what Brian's chart earlier was showing.
So that's not a project that you could just defer?
In other words, if you don't put the first piece of the rock dike in in June, then you can't start the berth dredging in August. And that's what he means by the domino effect.
Okay. Now, where's my questions? Okay. So I had any other questions? Anything else we need to ask them? Okay, all right. I think I've asked what I wanted to ask. Anything else you want to add?
I think there's some discussion about contract modifications in the process. You wanted to address some questions on that?
No.
Okay.
Okay, do you, I mean, just because this is a hearing and we can, is there anything from Gamble that you would like to just respond to or, oh, okay.
Yeah, we can respond to a lot of them.
Okay, just, you know, briefly.
Yeah.
Okay.
John Bridwell has some comments.
Okay. Because we're trying to get to the bottom of this.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Your name?
John Bridwell, Gamble Industries. The Army Corps already stated that they don't have to cancel the contract. They can make changes to the schedule. They've already made two to three that I'm aware of since it's been certified. Modify the EIR even since it's been certified, went from 80 to 160 as Ben stated earlier. The amount of the pier that's being demoed, originally, they're supposed to demo the complete pier, and now they're only demoing a portion of the piers. So, you know, when we look at possi-
Brian, do you want to just come back and just sit here and, I mean, I don't want to have a long back and forth, but it is helpful to me when one person says something to kind of have a response. Go ahead, John, if you want to finish what-
I think it's just there's flexibility, and it's been shown already in the, since this EIR has been certified, that the things that we're asking for are obtainable. And the concept of the vertical wall, we're not asking them to throw it back behind there and just let it sit without any sort of a retainer. This one is impervious. So the concept of putting the rock dike up later is really nothing more than moving at the tail, and it doesn't stop a lot of the processes. I'm just trying to show that there's obviously changes that occur. Brian?
But, yeah, but you guys pretty much said that the rock dike was actually helping to contain-
I think, as I understand it, you're describing making the toe dike larger, is that what you're saying? Right now, we have plans for small dike here-
Right.
-to contain the material for the foundation for this dike. You're suggesting making this a larger dike?
A rock, a vertical sheet pile wall at the same height of this, right in the middle of your toe berm.
Mm-hmm.
So later, you can do all of this, and at that height, you're able to start doing all of this.
Yeah. So if I understand it right, you're saying, put in a temporary-
Make this day.
Okay, put in a sheet pile barrier and then move sediments behind it?
Yes.
And that's basically the plan we're talking about, where you're confining materials behind a structure-
Right.
-that we need to get a permit to be able to approve. And it's, it could be, we need an application, have to go through a process. The question is, how long is it going to stay there? Is it a permanent structure? What's the reason? I mean, it brings in the whole process all over again, so really, whether it's a temporary measure or whether it's a permanent sheet pile wall, you're doing it for a particular reason.
And that reason has to be-
And that reason is a driver in our permit process.
Okay, Ben Resnick for the record, I'm sorry just for interrupting, so we can get the information down. Brian, so if you were to not study the shipyard as sort of a cause for why this is being done, as the chair indicated, what if it's just that the city wants to preserve the option of a future shipyard and keep a water slip open? And you let us study the shipyard in our EIR, EIS, we will entail all of the issues you raised. Isn't this really just a minor modification to your current plan where your berm stays, you dump your material exactly where it's called for, we add a sheet pile wall, it's just adding more security, more barrier, if you will, but a little taller so that you can dump everything you need to dump there on schedule? It seems to me if there ever is a minor modification to a permit, and the Army Corps issues minor modifications all the time to its own projects, you said you would need a permit, but you're the one issuing it. You said you would need a application. It's here, it's the city and it's the port. So if the city and the port were to come to you and say, "We want to do this, and we want to do it expeditiously, and we will handle the shipyard, EIR, EIS in a separate project, you'll get to analyze all that," why would this become a major modification that requires two to three years of analysis when we're just talking about one sheet pile that can go in and is a used system? It's nothing that you guys haven't put in all over the world, and this provides a solution so that we, you'd be able to be on schedule, we'd be able to analyze an EIR for the shipyard and go through all the permitting we need to. And if a year from now, if you put off building the rock dike, this shipyard seems to be going nowhere, or the EIR is not going nowhere-
Yeah.
-you have the option of just finishing the project as you planned, on schedule, with a big rock dike. So why would that not work?
Well, I-
It's a good question. Seems like a win-win.
I was thinking in my mind here, the engineering, this thing, I mean, we would need to, first of all, if you compare the two things, we have a detailed design, it's under construction right now.
Right.
We don't have a design for the sheet pile, right? Okay, so we have to bring those things up to the same level of design. And then the sheet pile may end up being a permanent structure, and it may be the permanent solution for the stored contaminated sediment. So you're really leading down the same path, I mean, we can call it temporary, but in reality, it may be analyzed by agencies as a permanent structure because it might end up being left there. So I'm thinking that, you know, and again, we don't have the, we need to see the specific proposal to really make, you know, definitive comments, but it seems to me logically that we're still in the same place we were before. We're still making a modification to the CDF facility to accommodate a shipyard, whether we say right now, we have not made a decision or not, we are making that change because of that potential likelihood. And therefore, it leads us into the path again of having to do that analysis.
But when the decision was made and-
Let me just ask my legal folks here, because this is me speaking, I want to make sure I'm not saying something that they're going to agree to.
Identify yourself again for the record.
I'm Lawrence Minch, I'm the district council from the Army Corps of Engineers. Our regulations require when we issue a modification to a permit, whether it's a minor one or a major one, that we have a finding of consistency with the Coastal Commission's plans. And because in this particular situation, we've heard what the Coastal Commission staff thinks about this, we have to be prepared to explain to them why this modification should go forward before we issue it. So-
What the Coastal Commission thinks of what?
The Coastal Commission would think so, using sheet piles.
Okay.
On a temporary basis or a permanent basis. The same basic issue. So when we're talking about time, I'm not saying that it can never happen, but when we're talking about time, we would first have to go through a process of analysis to prepare something, we're assuming for discussion's sake that this is a minor modification that doesn't require a full-blown SEIS, EIR-
Right.
But just to say, we have to prepare that document, and then we have to prepare a document that we would submit to the Coastal Commission, which would probably be, the port would have to as well, and we would have to wait till they told us what they thought about it before we could issue a permit. And if they were skeptical, as they have been in the past-
And what date are we talking about, that sheet metal rock wall would be built?
Just so we're clear, the Coastal Commission was never presented with what we're talking about today. The skepticism you're talking about had to do with a vertical containment open cell system for the permanent storage of the contaminants. That's what would be studied in a fully IREIS that we will do. They will get that. They've never presented with the concept of having a sheet pile wall in there, whether it's temporary or permanent, to help provide further barrier-
And what's the date that that would have to be built?
The sheet pile?
Mm-hmm.
Whenever they want to do their berm?
It would be summer, midsummer, later part of summer. But, you know, originally, the certified EIR was to demo 100% of the piers, and that was order to get the dirt underneath them, the contaminated or the unsuitable materials in there and get it compacted properly. Was that analyzed, being left in there? Because that is going to be permanent now, and there was a modification that I don't see any paperwork on, or neither have our attorneys been able to find any paperwork. That was never analyzed to see if that was acceptable to leave in there.
In other words, the changing of the project from demolishing all the piers in order to get to all the contaminants versus just demolishing a portion to save the cost, no one's ever analyzed, what do you do with the contaminants?
And I think at the end of the day, that's going to remain as a frustration or a concern by those who really wanted to preserve those slips, was that there seems to be a sense from the Army Corps that, you know, certain times, there are major changes and/or minor changes, and yet the project continues, modifications are made, permits are either are or aren't required. So it, I think there will always be a sense that, boy, if somebody really wanted this to happen, seems to me, we could have figured it out with permits, with analysis, with modifications, and the Army Corps would have, you know, would have proceeded if it was something that everybody-
I think it's all about scale, basically, and the scale you're talking about of the change where you're in a construction project and instead of removing all the piers because of expense or for some reason, remove some of them, and it's all within a confined disposal facility to begin with, I mean, the relative significance of that change is not anywhere near the magnitude of saying, "We're going to change the whole mechanism for storing material from a rock structure with sand behind it to a vertical wall containment." It really hasn't been designed yet. So not that we're, again, we're not commenting on whether or not shipyards are the right thing or wrong thing to do.
Right.
All we need to do is say that we believe in the Corps of Engineers, we're going to get into a process-
Right.
-to make this change at this point in time, this level of-
And you think that, and you think the schedule of the-
And we may come up to the end of the process, you know, who knows where you come up to the end of the process, but it's going to take some time to do that.
And at this point, and at this point, you're saying we don't have it?
I'm saying that, you know, it's not really our decision to say whether or not this project should be delayed or not if the-
But you're saying it will be if-
Saying that the effect of all this, the most likely is going to be effect on the ability to finish the project.
Councilwoman, I think-
Yeah, just a few more things and then we'll-
I think there's a-
A solution, we've been waiting for a solution.
No, no, we're hitting on the issue, really, it comes down to whether this is minor, major, minor, if it could be done expeditiously, and I think then there's an opening to do this. We brought to the attention of the local Army Corps, it sounds like they had not been aware, that the system Gamble proposes to utilize for the vertical wall is engineered by a company called PND. PND is now under contract with the Army Corps to study their system to see if it's suitable for containment of hazardous material. Army Corps is currently studying that. They anticipate by the end of February- They anticipate by the end of February to have their results. It's being done at ERDC, which is the Engineering Research and Development Center for the Army Corps of Engineers.
Go ahead.
So, right now, we will know in about six weeks' time, they estimated by the end of February, whether the Army Corps Research Center believes that the open cell system we showed you would be suitable for this containment of hazardous waste. Six weeks from today. It seems to me if the Army Corps Research Center approves it and gives it its good seal approval, House of Goodkeeping Seal of Approval, that that would certainly put a less burden or ease on the local Army Corps engineers to determine that this is a minor modification, that the system itself is, works, and of course, that will heavily influence Coastal Commission's decisions as well about the fact that engineering research at Army Corps back in Vicksburg, Mississippi, has decided it's safe. So, in six weeks' time, we're going to know. It seems to me that if we want to have that opportunity, if the council were to be able to send this back, set aside the port's decision to terminate, but send it back, because nothing's stopping channel deepening proceeding right now, and they're on schedule.
Right.
But it seems like if the result comes back, that this is a very doable system, wouldn't that make a big difference in the engineering...
Let me hear from the Army Corps, would that make a big difference?
Well, I mean, if the Corps were the only decision-maker, that would be fantastic. Unfortunately, we're not the only player in this field, and all of our assumptions are based on the fact that, the belief that this could be a workable system. We're not saying it couldn't work, we're just saying there's a process that we have to go through to get to the conclusion that everybody agrees it can work, and it's a suitable modification to what we had implemented in the first place, and we can issue a permit. It's just all about process.
One of the things that's really key here is, Gamble has been speaking with the Port of Los Angeles since 2007 about a shipyard, and now we went through all of this about trying to get modifications before the certification of the EIR, and here we are at this late hour, trying to find some way to get the application in before we can analyze the shipyard. We've asked the port in writing to submit an application to the Army Corps and to the Coastal Commission, because that's what we are frequently talking about here, is that we need time to make sure we analyze this. And what we're talking about with this vertical wall temporary is that literally it is going to be there, and if we don't get through the application process and get approval from these regulatory agencies, then they go ahead and build their rock dike. So all along, Gamble has stated, "We don't want to interfere with channel deepening." We've spent more and more money, and I appreciate the fact that the port has spent more and more hours also, and the council, a lot of people.
Yeah, with a lot of people, spend a lot of hours on this.
Really trying to get that application out there before we can get the process to evaluate it started, because until we actually get that started, we are all just talking.
To Mr. ...I'm totally sympathetic to the situation that you're in, and the decision is wrong as a matter of fact, we understand...
Engineers are sympathetic?
But we need, you know, we need to make sure we're giving you information...
Right.
...that we feel as an agency is information you need as a decision-maker to make.
Right.
So my purpose here is only to supply information that we think, so this is our view...
With the facts before you now, this is your, this is your, this is your opinion?
Yes.
That at this point, you know, any, any change to the original plan to dump the dirt, contain the dirt, and to cap the dirt, any change to that would, would delay by, you're saying, a couple of years?
Well, I would restate, I'd say that the changes that we're describing here...
The changes we're describing?
Would trigger a process that we need to go through, that could take from two years to accomplish, and then put us in a position of having to decide what to do with the present contractor's schedule, and could impact the schedule.
So here's the problem. Why did we enter into an MOU in June of 2009, knowing full well, as the port did, council did, we did, that we're going to reconfigure the way we store that sediment? If we knew that in 2009, and that it's going to take two to three years to study, no one said it was going to happen, no one said in 2009, before Gamble spent millions of dollars on engineering, on all of the designs, that, oh, by the way, at the end of the road, there'll be a two to three-year study because of, we think you need to study all kinds of other things. The MOU then was awfully misleading, or the port was, if that's the case. No one anticipated that. And if in fact they did, then the port should have, under its obligations on the MOU, because you know what, it's not just Gamble's obligation, paragraph five of the MOU called collaboration says, "The parties," that's both of us, "intend to engage in a collaborative process to develop an acceptable method to complete the disposal of the dredge material that minimizes the filled portion of the berths and maximizes the water access." Now, if we all knew that...
Right.
Where was the port then, with Army Corps saying, "But we have to do a two-year study"? The fact of the matter is, every time we've provided a solution that we believe is minor, can be done, we hit a roadblock. And at this point, we are hitting the roadblock that is so thin, it is so thin, it is basically saying, "Well, we're not sure, it could be a minor, if it's a minor, we're sure it's quick, maybe it's a major, and we're not sure if we have to study the shipyard, we don't know." What's lacking here is the initiative of the client, the initiative of the port to say to the Army Corps, "We want it, and we want you to get the yes."
Right, Cindy?
The only thing I'm going to say is, I think the MOU was entered in good faith, we all believed at the time that this could be done within one year. That was what Gamble offered. Gamble went to work to provide plans, the engineers on the support staff went to work to look at the plans and verify them. We together first learned from the Army Corps that they would not consider this minor, they might have to consider it relative to the shipyard, they might have to consider it relative to everything else. We learned that, I believe, in April, the first time together collectively, when the Army Corps testified to us, after the Coastal Commission had already written a letter at that same status report time, saying that they needed more information about the vertical wall, because they weren't satisfied that it would meet their test on coastal safety and coastal conservancy issues relative to contaminated soil. So no one, you know, was duplicitous or did not know, knew something that we didn't tell, we all felt, remember, in 2005, the port felt that the coming up with an alternative site was minor, and it didn't, you know, occur that way, and we lost four years. So we believed this one was arguably minor as a modification and could go forward. It was all these other, as the Army Corps engineer has testified, all these other agencies that collectively, you know, had they all been party of the MOU, perhaps we would have been much further along, but they weren't. We...
The Army Corps, the Army Corps should have...
Army Corps and/or coastal and/or everybody, because it's not just between the two of us.
Right, okay, one more thing, John.
One item. In the certified EIR, it states very clearly, and this is one of the pages right out of it, that they are not going to dredge to the pier. The piers need repairs, they're not engineered through depths of 53 before they can dredge that last 30 feet. That said, that material also is the bad of the bad, and I'm curious as to how many years these shippers, China Shipping has been cited as one of them today, which is also one of these that is not going to be dredged to the pier, that they, and it was stated that they will be able to, and this is not part of this certified EIR. Is that going to be a three to five-year process in order to figure out where to put that dirt?
The China Shipping surcharge?
That 30 feet, the 30 feet up to the pier.
The China Shipping dredging is not part of this channel deepening project. The involvement of China Shipping is that the surcharge gets moved, and so we schedule the project to maximize use of material, and that's why all these projects are tried together. But there is no dredging that's associated with China Shipping's work.
My misspoke, it's China Shipping, it's Evergreen, it's actually not getting dredged right to the pier, along with others along the east side of the main channel. Are those going to get dredged to the pier?
Yeah, there are three projects, three terminals where we're doing pier dredging. One terminal where we're actually doing a fill, and then China Shipping where we're moving the surcharge material.
On Evergreen, though, taking that last 30 feet...
What's your point here, John?
Well, we're talking about channel deepening, and it's not in the EIR, and it's contaminated material, so that's going to be a very long time before these ships can actually get to the pier, and Evergreen was mentioned as one of them.
Or they're just going to do it because it's convenient to do it.
No, if I was to, Counselor, if I were to draw a picture and answer to John's question, of the condition of the berths at Evergreen, YTI, and Yangming, and one section of Tray Park, you'd see that we are below the authorized depth at the pier, which is right now 45 feet. We have shoaling, and that 42 to 45 feet actually extends out almost 100 feet. What is in the scope of the channel deepening takes that wedge of material at berth and cars it as close as we possibly can to the existing wharf, and gives us 53 foot as close to the wharf as we can, belles it up to 45. That will allow the vessels in the 1,000 PU range to get there now.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, thank you. You may all... Okay. You know, I will tell you, I, for one, am glad we had this three and a half hour hearing, and I know many of you, I've at least had water, some of you out there haven't even had that, and I appreciate it. But I thought this was too important of an issue to really not have another, oh, you know, I forgot to, to Congress members. I'm sorry, I forgot. What's your name? We have someone from Congressman Rohrbacher's office. Howard Hills, is that you?
Yeah.
Okay. Before I make my closing statement, I will give you some water. Okay, there, okay, we understand that Congressman Rohrbacher is weighing in on this as well. And you heard from Commissioner Dave Arion, who expressed what I think maybe a lot of people express, "Okay, wait a minute, now it's, you know, this is not something I asked for, this is not something the port asked for," you know, does this, is, does this in any way delay this main channel shipping? Because I think if you were sitting here today for three and a half hours, you heard every speaker say how important it is, and I'm sure Congressman Rohrbacher would understand since he represents the ports, positioning our ports, I like to call it the Americas port, positioning us in the future to be as competitive as we can be, and this channel deepening is key to that. So what is this congressional inquiry all about? And do you see it in any way interfering with the schedule of the channel deepening?
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Howard Hills, I'm on the district staff in the Huntington Beach office of the 46th District.
We know Kathleen.
Yes, and I would actually prefer that she was sitting here instead of me, but I came to observe today, but I actually did want to address something to clarify the record a little bit in assistance to your deliberations and in support of your decision-making process. And really, it was the comments by the commissioner about Congressman Rohrbacher's involvement that caused me to want to clarify a couple of things for the record. First of all, I'd like to say that Congressman Rohrbacher understands and respects the professionalism of the Army Corps engineers, and respects the decision-making authority of the Port of Los Angeles, and doesn't have any intention of in any way complicating the process. To the contrary, it was when he was visited in his office in Washington DC by the Port of Los Angeles representatives, the director who's here, that he first sort of started to take cognizance of the direction this was going in. And they provided him with comprehensive briefing back in Washington. So I guess the sequence of events that led to Congressman Rohrbacher sending a letter to the Army Corps engineers asking some questions...
Yeah.
...really was instigated by the Port of Los Angeles visiting him in Washington DC, not by the correspondence he received by the attorneys for Gamble. And since there was a statement on the record that indicated that it was Mr. Resnick that had generated Congressman Rohrbacher's letter to the Army Corps, I wanted to clarify that his letter took cognizance of the specific issues raised by the attorneys for Gamble, which is a company that's in his district and therefore is one of his constituents. But the thing I wanted to say to the commissioner was that the letter from Congressman Rohrbacher is incapable of causing anything to spin out of control. It's a letter from a congressman to the Army Corps engineers, which is a federal agency, about the disposition of a decision-making process that affects a company that's a constituent of his in his district. It's nothing more, nothing less. And I think that his, the letter goes very directly to the point of really wanting confirmation from the Army Corps engineers of what he was told by the Port of Los Angeles, which was that there were, that we'd run out of airspeed and altitude, and that there was no options, and there were no alternatives, and that this thing was, you know, in a posture where there was no flexibility. And I think that that was somewhat counterintuitive for him, and he wanted the Army Corps engineers to advise him on that matter. So that was the nature of his inquiry. I would like to just make a couple of other comments based on sitting through the hearing if I could. One is that if this decision-making process ever became a case study at the John F. Kennedy School of Government, I think what they would say, and what I'm going to report to Congressman Rohrbacher when he, when I brief him on this, is that it's always a very unfortunate and lamentable thing when so much political goodwill gets squandered, as I saw happening here today. When you see people from both sides of the issues coming together and confirming that they started out in the process with a strong commitment to a win-win situation, and then you end up in a situation that is either a win-lose situation or a lose-lose situation, depending on how you look at it, that as a, just a matter of political management, is a regrettable situation and regrettable outcome, when you have so many stakeholders who are concerned about each other's interests, and yet the, there's a dilemma for the political management because the outcome is suboptimal. I think Congressman Rohrbacher's basic approach to this issue would be very simple, and it would be this. Having a shipyard, and I think the witnesses on both sides of the group today would agree with this...
Yes.
Having a shipyard would, for, I think in Congressman Rohrbacher's, you know, assessment of the interests, the allocation of interest here, would be that a shipyard would have strategic value and importance for the United States from a national interest point of view.
Yes.
That it would contribute to the harbor being a full-service harbor that's able to be fully competitive with other harbors, not only in the United States but internationally. And so I think that, you know, I think in the end, you know, my, my view would be, and finally, economically, I think everybody that I heard testify today would agree that under no circumstances should one job be lost.
Right.
But if you could add 500 or 1,000 jobs, I work on, one of the things I do in the district office is work on home loan modifications, and I can tell you that there are a lot of hard-working Americans in our district and in this district who are struggling right now, who would love to line up and apply for those jobs. So I will just end my statement by saying that Congressman Rohrbacher has written a letter to the Army Corps engineers on behalf of a company that's a great company, and he's looking for an answer from the Army Corps engineers to his questions. He requested an answer by February 1st, so he's not creating an open-ended timeline that could contribute to delays, he's asked for a timely response. And so I think that, I think that the one concern, finally, and I will terminate my statement and say this, that government agencies should not throw curveballs to companies. And I think his company, this company, as a constituent of Congressman Rohrbacher, did invest a lot of money, you know, and to some extent, one could come away with the impression that they've been thrown a couple of curveballs in this process, and when government and business are trying to do things in collaborative partnership way, it's always lamentable when the company ends up feeling like the, there's a moving target, or that the ground rules have been shifted on them. And I don't say that drawing conclusions, those are just observations I would make, but the bottom line is that Congressman Rohrbacher is not going to say or adopt a position on this until he gets an answer from the Army Corps engineers to the specific questions that are asked in his letter. And I'm not, I'm not speaking on his behalf or putting words in his mouth in the additional comments I've made here.
Thank you. Howard, by you just sitting here for three and a half hours, you have really captured, I think, what we've been going through for the last two or three years. So, good job.
Well, thank you, thank you for your forbearance in allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Best wishes to the congressman.
Thank you. No, I don't.
Cindy, would you come back up here?
Thank you.
And I think, you know, and I know you and Dave are relatively new on the commission, but again, you, I have no doubt that you have an incredible grasp of, you always had an incredible grasp of land use issues when you were a council member in the city, and I always give you credit for being the architect of the master plan of LAX. That thing was really stalled by lawsuits and litigation and community stakeholders, and you were able to craft a plan that was allowed us to, you know, modernize the airport while paying attention to the concerns of the community. And, you know, as you know, because you sat in my seat before, you know that I have two options here. One is to recommend that your action stays, and your action was basically to, well, the MOU between Gamble and the port is over, and so, and your action was to basically not designate this site as a shipyard, and, and what? And decline to negotiate any further with Gamble. That was what your action was. So, that's what came out. It was kind of a, kind of a negative, kind of a downer of an action by the Harbor Commission in a way. Again, listening to all the hopes and dreams and passion that I think you've heard from so many stakeholders in this process. And the other action is to veto what you decided, which is, it's kind of like a do-over, and we could send it back to you and ask for a different recommendation. And just on that alone, if that was to happen, if the Council was actually to send it back to the commission and say, "We'd like a different recommendation," would that, in your mind, in any way delay the project that's moving forward?
Again, it's more a question of what risk we're willing to take, and how
No, just in that action.
How would someone see, how would the world see a city council action that says, "We are vetoing an action of the port which says we would not designate it as the shipyard"? Does that mean, in fact, that you are suggesting that we should designate it as the shipyard? I mean, it leaves, again, some questions, and those
Right, but what if we had a specific recommendation?
And can be risky. On the other hand, I absolutely, and I think the port as well, has heard this saga, and the port did enter into the good faith of a shipyard, and perhaps opened its mind to the concept, which had not previously been there. If there's anything in the last year that I've been there, a year and a couple of months, it is that that concept should be seriously looked at as viable. Does it necessarily mean at this location, given the potential complications, given perhaps even a different kind of shipyard at this location with the fill that's in there? Or does it mean that we really should roll up our sleeves as a port to answer the Congressman and say, "In diversity, in planning, in land use, what else could it take, would it take, where it could take a shipyard"? So, in essence, because the MOU was defined, and that's the problem, the MOU was not open-ended. The MOU had a definitive time, a definitive study, a definitive responsibility, both on the part of the port and on the part of Gamble. We felt that we needed to conclude that, because the delay to it, we were hearing things from the Army Corps, saying, "What are you guys really doing there? Are we going to delay? Are we not going to delay? Are we going to redesign, not redesign?" And that's, those are fair questions, because we weren't knowing, and we were hearing alternatives. Having said that, I see this as sort of closing one door, that has closed the door on the MOU, but open another one, and open another one through which we all go together and say, "Port, you know, the city council is directing you, asking you, pleading with you." I mean, we look at the city attorney in terms of what language could be used in a council action to suggest that the port very seriously bring back to the city council within a short period of time options, just as when this EIR was done initially, before, it took us four years, but it was, you know, eight different options of where the contaminated soil should go. What could we do quickly, reasonably, as setting a course, as bring back a shipyard, a viable shipyard, a couple of viable, whatever, what is it? I mean, I was just saying, I was at a green conference on Monday on all sorts of new technology, but particularly technology for ports and airports, and someone out of the blue came up to me and said, "You know, I've got a new technique for green shipyard. Well, what is the port thinking about shipyard"? And this was someone who was totally oblivious to what we've been doing for the last year and a half.
How could anybody be totally oblivious to what we've been doing for the last year?
But, so, there, you know, we've got Port Check LA, we've got all sorts of other things going on, we need to be looking at the alternatives, and we need to be looking at servicing where we can the kind of shifts that are coming into our port today, at the very least. So, in the whole arena of understanding we're a container facility, understanding that that is our, the engine that runs this port, and it's 75% of our income, there is still other land, other income sources, and other things we need to be looking at in terms of being a fully diversified port. And I think shipbuilding is a part of it. So, the question is how we take that.
Right, thank you, thank you for that. Let me just, let me just say, and that's really, I think, where I'm going to go. And my decision today is clearly not going to make everybody happy. That's, you know, "To decide is to divide," the Prime Minister Tony Blair once said. But, and you'll also appreciate the fact that sometimes when you just leave it up to the good faith of the port and the port staff to actually do that, sometimes it takes a long time. So, I think my recommendation is going to be today, and again, it's not going to make everybody happy, but I think the way to get the Harbor Commission to really reflect what you just said, President Miskowski, and to really reflect what I think we've been hearing of the need for a shipyard, I think the best way to do that, in my opinion, and my other council members may disagree with me, is to recommend to the full city council that we veto your action, which is really a do-over, and that your next recommendation comes back quickly, that you acknowledge the concept, and in fact, will make it a priority to designate a shipyard to be built at the Port of Los Angeles, and begin directing your staff to begin looking for locations, and to begin the permitting process, the analyzing, if we need to build, if we need to dig some deep-water slips somewhere else, that we will begin to look in at that, because I think the win-win situation is going to be to bring a shipyard to the Port of Los Angeles. I think there's a need, I think we can do it, and I would really like for the Harbor Commission to make that their recommendation in light of what was before you, because I think to sort of separate it and say, "Sometime in the future, you're going to come back and make that recommendation," I think we lose the fact that it was this process, it was the Gamble process, it was the coming together of the community on this process that I think showed me that it is a viable project to bring a shipyard. And within this process, if we veto your action, it just means a do-over, and you come back, and I will say, my recommendation is that you come back with a recommendation to designate a location, or designate the priority for bringing a shipyard to the Port of Los Angeles.
Just, Janice, Arian, Commissioner Arian, you know, I'm in agreement as a commissioner to do everything I can on the commission to find a spot for a shipyard, if it's possible. And I would hope that any action that's taken on Monday just indicates that, that, you know, the kind of support I need from you is to say, "Hey, you did the best job you could, but what you need to do now is look at where can we do this and starting over." And I'm new there, and I'm willing to start over.
Okay.
But I hope that's what comes out of it.
Thank you. And in no way will this action delay the channel deepening. I'm going to say that again, and I'll say that in my recommendation to the full city council. But I think to just send it back to you and have you come back with a more positive action, I think would help to incorporate the hours and hours and hours of work that we've all spent on the idea of bringing a shipyard to the Port of Los Angeles. But I think, you know, again, I'm not an engineer, but I think the Army Corps was clearly your ace. It's very difficult to dispute what their findings, and I know that's what you felt, Dave, and I know that's what you felt, Cindy, as well. So, that'll be my recommendation. Thank you very much. This meeting is now adjourned.